All right, it is now 6:02. I'm going to call the meeting to work. So this is a special meeting of the Board of Education. I want to thank everybody for joining our virtual summer sessions. I know we've had a lot of you who are regulars with us. So thank you very much. I'll just point out a couple of things. The agenda for the meeting is one of three items tonight can be found on our board docs website. If you want to get there, you can go from the Greenwich Public Schools, the greenishschools.org website, click on Board of Education, click on Meetings, and that'll take you to board docs. Click on today's date, and then I'll get you into the meeting. This is a special meeting as such, we're not taking public comments. Members of the community can send emails to all BOE members through a single email address. That's boardofedmembers@grenish.k12.c t.us. Again, it's grenish.k12.c t.us. Meeting tonight is going to consist of discussion by among the superintendent board members and the administrative team. I would ask people to please stay muted when they're not speaking. Ask participants to state their name when called upon. If I don't state your name, we're going to use the raise the hand function like always. Remind board members to keep their comments concise and on the agenda items. For any voting tonight, we'll be doing that via roll call vote. So with that, could we please give the flag, Michael, and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, just to keep this simple, I'm going to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Is there a second?
You go, Joe.
I got Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly is our second. All right, we're going to do a quick roll call vote on the meeting agenda. So Bernstein is a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Waltski, I'm not sure if she's on yet. Hopefully she'll join us in progress. Olson?
Yes.
And Mr. Scher?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That passes 7-0. All right, so the first item on the meeting agenda tonight is the reopening plan. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. I actually just have a couple of slides to go through tonight so that it's not just an oral presentation and you're trying to feverishly write down the numbers. Just as a reminder, I am going to share some of that enrollment information, and we could not post that before tonight because the survey just closed last evening at midnight. So we were working on all of the numbers today to make sure they were accurate and to be prepared for you tonight. Go ahead, Mike, to the first slide. So just as a reminder on facilities, we haven't really shown any pictures. So I just want to make sure that people who are on tonight and also for the Board of Education know how much work is really going in in order to prepare our facilities, striping the floor, the directional arrows, desk arrangements. That has been a tremendous amount of work. We have a lot of classrooms that have collaborative tables. We've had to move those out, replace furniture all across the district by moving furniture around. We did have some old desks in storage that's been a help. We also have plexi dividers that are, you know, must be put in all around the district. Our room usage adjustments, simply to make sure that we have social distancing and cohorting. We're having to use spaces differently than we normally would. The cafeteria furniture change out in some of our cafeterias, we're having to expand into another space in the building so that we can actually get through the lunch schedule, you know, in a timely manner. We're having small cohorts and making sure that they have six feet at least of distance because their mask is off. So quite a bit of work has gone into our cafeterias. And again, switching desks where needed. Thanks, Mike. This just gives you an idea. This is at Western. Some of you have probably seen some other pictures that have been online. But this just gives you an idea in the middle school. Again, directionality, dividing the center so that students know, you know, which side of the hall to walk on. We're working very hard on making sure, especially like in that secondary, passing time is only with that cohort and they're all staggered. So you don't have all of your sixth graders out in the hall at the same time. This is what a middle school room looks like. There will be some plexies added to this room. These are desks, are tables that generally would have two students on every table. So when you look at that front row, what you're looking at is about a five-foot distance. And as you know, we're trying to make sure that we stay with that state guidance, three to six. And that is actually a five-foot distance between student to student. That's a middle school, again. Some of you may have seen this picture online. This is a kindergarten where they're utilizing tables. These tables usually hold four at least students. There are only two on a table, and they will actually have a clear divider. You'll see that in just a minute. But we, with kindergarten, we're making sure, again, that they don't feel quite so isolated either. We're trying to make sure that there's a buddy, that they sit relatively, obviously, social distancing wise, but a different feeling than what a third grader would have with the desk because they are little. So this is what we call a clear divider. There is a clear divider for every elementary student in the district. And this is just an added layer above and beyond the social distancing that we are doing simply because we know with our little ones that it's, you know, it's going to be hard for them. They're probably going to fiddle with their mask a little bit. And again, it's an added layer of safety. But I also want to remind people, the picture on the right is just an example from somewhere else across the country where, you know, teachers are really creative. So when you look at that picture on the left, it looks kind of stark. But our teachers are going to be creative and get color back in these rooms. And even though we're missing some of our rugs and things that we would normally have, the teacher on the right was really very inspirational in how she took a clear divider and turned all the little desks into cars. So I just share that because I know that we're going to make our spaces bright and happy places for children. So you see these at all the entrances of our buildings. Again, there's signage all across our buildings reminding everybody to keep a safe distance. It's just, again, we're constantly going to remind our students and our staff that we want to follow all of our safety protocols. So this is some of the enrollment information that I know some of the board were really eager to see. Our total K-12 enrollment as of today, and keep in mind, we still don't start for a few more weeks. So this can still go up a little bit and down a little bit. Right now, our total K-12 is 8,730 students. So we're right at 99.4% of our projection, almost spot on to our projection. And what was projected for K-12 was 8,787. And at the high school, I think they're within two or three students of actually being exactly on their projection. Along with that, we always have our preschool number. But I left the projection on here for you of what we had in the budget was 188. As a reminder, it's a rolling admission. So right now, I think they're around about 130. But as children turn three, those programs, the preschool program will grow throughout the year. And our projection is 180, which puts us just under that 9,000 mark, 8,918 students. And again, that's as of today. So when we look at the remote learners, when the survey closed last night, this is where we are. We have 694 of our almost 4,000 students. So it's right at 17.4% of our elementary, and that's pre-K through five. In middle school, we have 411 who are choosing to go full remote, and that's right at about 20%. In high school, we have 444 students out of our 2,822, which is that 15.7. And then overall, when you average that, it's the 17.5% are the families that are choosing to go remote. And again, we have over 80% of our families that are choosing face to face. So it's finding the balance between, you know, giving everybody the choice, what works for their family. So when you look at elementary remote, this is the number from each building. And you'll notice there really is not a consistent pattern. You can have, for instance, North Myannis and Riverside are very, you know, relatively close in size. North Myannis has 82 choosing remote out of 492. And Riverside, another one of our larger buildings, is 55. So there's, you know, a difference there in what people are choosing. And again, there's, there's really not a pattern that we can discover, you know, where one building may have more or one may have less. But that's what it looks like from each building. When we look at our middle school, we have the most students choosing remote are from Western Middle School. We have 166 out of the 627. Central is 114, and Eastern is 127. So from a percentage standpoint, Eastern actually has the fewest students opting to go full remote. And this is our high school again, 444 out of that 2,822. So I'm going to show a short video. It's literally about four minutes, just to give you some idea of pictures and what teaching will look like in the fall. So before we start your questions, because I know that that's always the main event is the questions. Thanks, Mike. Mike, the sound's not working, at least for me. Is it for anybody else?
No, I'm not getting any sound.
Emil, do you see what I'm highlighting? Do you see it?
Yeah, I see it.
Go for it, Emil. What's, what's the theme statement that, from last week?
Hard work trumps talent.
So Brady, can you read the theme statement that's more specific? That explains what hard work trumps talent means?
Hard work beats talent when talent doesn't want to work hard.
Okay, hard work beats talent when talent doesn't want to work hard. Think about that for a moment.
Hi, class. So we are on our third expository essay or informational writing essay. This one is based on the perfect dinner. If you're going to have a dinner party, what would your menu be? Paragraph one will be your introduction, which is due today. Paragraph two is your appetizer. Paragraph three is your main course. Paragraph four is the dessert. And paragraph five is a conclusion. It should look like an essay.
Hello, students. We're back. We're going to work on a couple of new trick words. And if you remember, our trick words are words that we just have to learn to read when we see them because they don't follow the standard rules. So I want to start off today with one new word. And I'll show you on the screen here what that new word is. So F is a skyline letter. It starts on the skyline, trace back on the skyline, then way down to the grass line. Cross it at the pro line.
... length, this is ultraviolet, okay? So ultraviolet has small wavelengths, okay? Now we've got visible, you've got visible light. So if you've got visible light, you can't see the irregularities of the picture.
So at this point right now, we are going to go into small group. So we're doing the same groups all week long this week. So Ethan, Yahia, Priscilla, Mateo, and Julie, your group A. Gep, Alexander, Brady, Rose, and Emil, your group B. Today, group A will go first because they went second yesterday.
Our digital tools are intended to supplement and enhance learning. These digital tools support both live teaching and independent learning. At the foundation is our Google Classroom, where class communications, connections, and scheduling all coincide. Our youngest learners in the remote program have an interactive foundations classroom for both live teaching and independent exploration. Our learners also have access to collaborative tools like NearPod and Jamboard, where they can interact with their teachers and classmates for lively discussions and debates. All grade levels have other resources like Smore newsletters and other communication tools that provide additional learning and archiving of materials and information. At GPS, we are fortunate to have a large and robust digital toolbox, combined with a continued commitment to streamline offerings and adapt to any changing needs of our staff and learners.
Thank you, Mike, for playing that for us. Couple of, a couple of notes. First of all, if any students or teachers were shown, we had permission, obviously. And a very, a thank you to those teachers and students that were in summer school and allowed us to, to do some videoing. We also had some people who did video for us and just recently. So the other thing I would add is at the very end, we haven't talked a lot about the instructional aspect. I tried to explain it, I think, at the last meeting. So hopefully now that you, you see a little bit of it, it's, it's a help. So the direct instruction is when the teacher is either in front of a whiteboard or they're in the conference-style Google meets. But we also have what are called breakout rooms. So after a teacher introduces now that direct content and there is engagement, we can actually put students in breakout rooms. And when you think about the high school or the middle school, for instance, for that streaming hybrid, they can actually pair two students in the live classroom with two students to be in a breakout room together who are at home. So we will have engagement. We're excited about where we are going into the fall. So I'm going to leave it at that because I know you will have questions. And we want to get started with questions, I believe.
Tony, this is Peter Bernstein. I wanted to ask you about the teacher offense. I know that was something else that we had asked about at our last meeting.
So a couple of things. Teachers can't opt out. So they can request a meeting with human resources. So if they qualify, then they can go remote. And right now, I believe we are at, we've almost completed all of our meetings. We have 27 teachers across the district who qualify under that federal guideline. And in most, and most of those 27, if not all, want to still teach. They are just unable at this point in time to be inside a building.
All right, board members, if you want to ask questions, I'd ask you to raise your hands. Ms. Olson?
Hi. First, I have a question about the video. So I'm going to start in a different order, which was pretty condensed. It's about four-minute video. And it was the middle school and high school and the live streaming and the webcam streaming was a blip in a video. It looks like a lot of thought and planning, or decent amount of thought and planning, have gone into in preparation for the Elementary School Remote Learning Academy. When can we expect to see a video about the web streaming? More than just a quick second, but an actual end-up video of the web, live streaming?
Yeah, they don't actually, in elementary, they don't actually have the same model as secondary. They have a teacher that's attached to the class. So that when you saw the very first part of the video and the teacher was on the screen with those students, that's how it will be for elementary. They will be teaching live, and they could have a board behind them and stand up. And, you know, if they choose to, for instance, do their morning calendar that way. But they are on the screen live with their students, very much like what we're doing tonight.
Right, now my question was, when we're going to be able to see a video of live, a video representative of middle school and high school?
Well, that was middle school and high school. What you saw in that video just now, actually, the first group you saw, that's, it's a model like you would see in, in elementary. But the rest of that video was actually what you would see in high school. So when you saw the person sitting at the desk, you're seeing what the student view was like, where the teacher is teaching live down on the bottom corner. And you, if they want to share their screen, if they're using a PowerPoint that day or they have some sort of, something interactive on their smartboard, that's, that is on the, the large part of the screen so that they don't miss anything the teacher's presenting. If it's like a math teacher and they're on a whiteboard, they're literally working on the whiteboard and the students can see all of that. So that was high school. It was, that was representative of what you would see, K-12.
And then I know that at the, at the, at the July meeting, that this can be directed to Mark Tomico, I suppose, as well. Mark Tomico, you had said that there was a 50-50 balance between live teaching and asynchronous for a remote learning academy. And you had said that you'd research and that that was best practice. Is this a 50-50 plan? Will we expect to see 50% synchronous and 50% asynchronous at the middle and high school levels as well?
So when we've mentioned the word, when we've talked about 50-50, we said that would be the basis. That is the minimum expectation that a parent could expect for their child to be interacting with the teacher. But if you go back to, if you recall, the model that we shared, even the areas that I identified as asynchronous opportunities, the teacher is still present online to do one of three things. Pull an individual student for perhaps a running record, a type of assessment, answer questions, have a conference, read with a child, have a child read to them, could be meeting with a small group of students, or could simply be sitting idle in the background while the students are completing an independent activity and then answering on-demand questions. But the, but the idea really is for the teacher to be online the majority of the day and available to the students.
I'm talking specifically to secondary ed, though, because it feels like there's, it, it seems that there's a difference in what was originally presented as secondary, middle school and high school, what we are seeing now. So what is the breakdown? What is the percentage that we can expect live teaching versus students just watching a webcast? So what can we present? What can we, what is the percentage breakdown? What is the plan? Talking specifically remote learning academy for secondary ed.
Okay, so I'm going to defer to, to Dr. Carabillo for the secondary piece.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take it. And she, and she may not be able to jump on. So in secondary, they're actually web streaming every single course. They follow their schedule. Again, they, it will be like what you just saw where the teacher is, you'll greet the students that are online in the class face to face. The teacher does their direct teaching, and the students can see that from home. And teachers may use breakout groups. They may have students have 10 minutes of independent research and then come back together. It's, which I know you know, I'm preaching to the choir, a variety of different strategies in how the teacher will do the independent time and then they come back together. So a secondary student is really in live engagement, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday is still live, but you may find the teachers do some video reteaching, you know, where they're recording so that if they taught something earlier and they feel like students need more practice, and they may be doing small group tutorials along with some of that synchronous that we saw in the spring, which a lot of our families really liked, some of the video where kids could go back and actually watch the live teaching again to have it, you know, for reteaching purposes.
So what is, I guess I'm trying to understand what's the breakdown, the percentage? I'm still trying to get an answer to this question because I understand that if it, because live streaming and not having a teacher directed to, not having a specific remote learning academy teacher interacting, like what we saw in the middle school and elementary school presentation just now impressed me. I think that, that that would, that would be, I, I see that as best teaching practices. I agree with you there. For secondary ed, I'm trying to understand how not having a remote teacher assigned, as was originally explained, in a 50-50 percentage. So I guess I'm just trying to get, to have a plan, we need a percentage. We need to know what teachers should expect because there's been a bit of a bait and switch from the beginning.
Yeah, well, it's at least 50%, but it's a teacher, because of the way high school and secondary classes run, that they're going to be online for the direct teaching. If the teacher has an independent assignment, it doesn't mean they're actually not still online. They're still sitting in the Google meets, but they may be doing some independent research for 10 minutes and then coming back because...
But, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're, they're watching all day. Because I know that there's different, a lot of schools have, have plans where they have separate, a sample school scheduled day for remote learning versus a sample school schedule for in-person, the in-person week, so, or in-person, I guess we're doing all in-person here. So my question is, why are they doing the exact same thing? Why are they turning on a screen and watching the screen all day long when we know that Zoom fatigue is an issue? When we realize that student one-on-one engagement, which would happen with what we saw at the elementary school, you have a remote learning instructor engaging and pulling them and asking them questions? You are, I, I'm, I'm sort of surprised that this is the plan you're putting into place for middle school and high school with such a robust program for elementary school. I know that at one of the town halls, you said that web streaming was ideal for middle school. And I'm, I'm trying to reconcile between fifth graders, who are 10 years old maybe, and sixth graders who are 11, and how we go from such an interactive approach for elementary school with a designated teacher to suddenly something that's ideal. You use the word ideal. I'm trying to understand how that's ideal for middle schools to turn on their screen and be in front of the screen the entire day, watching class be conducted. So if I, any answers would be great.
I think it's not, you're not just turning on a screen and just watching. It is interactive. It's, you know, when kids show up in class, they're sitting, you know, generally in a desk, at a table, and a teacher has the direct instruction. And that won't be any different for the students that are in sixth through 12. The other thing we're trying to make sure for, especially in secondary, is they need to have a teacher who also has the strong content knowledge and they're developing relationships with that teacher. We've already seen from the first survey opt-out to the second survey opt-out, how parents keep, and we're changing their minds. So if a student in, for instance, has, you know, a teacher for math, a teacher for English, and they wanted to opt back in, our students in Greenwich are going to be able to do that and come back into the regular schedule on, with, without very few exceptions, and, and know the teacher, they've developed the relationship, and they have been engaged in the classroom. So I think it's understanding that there is engagement when you're in the class and...
So are you guaranteeing then that class that has a space for that person? If they, if a remote student opted in, then space-wise, CDC guidelines, that there is a space for that student to opt in, opt out?
What we've done is, absolutely. We have built our entire schedule, K-12, to make sure that our class sizes are, what we believe is safe for every classroom, and we have to. And that's part of the complexity of planning for this because if we have 20 students who all of a sudden say, we want to opt back in, while we said it may take up to two weeks, we've built our schedules right now where there's a, there's a placeholder there so that student wouldn't have to come back and change all of their whole, whole schedule and all their teachers. And again, we've done that across the entire district.
And would you be able to show us a video of some live streaming, web streaming, where it's interactive? We can see middle school students interacting?
I think we will be able to do that. Could I do it today before the next meeting? I may not because trying to get, of all, a room full of children and, you know, the teacher there to do it, I would say after school starts, if we have signed releases from, you know, a teacher that wants to do that, we might be able to give you an example of that, but not with like live students and live teachers.
But we just watched a video, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure this out because we just watched a video, Tony, of students. We just watched a video of what remote learning is going to look like, right? And we got a blip on the radar of middle school. It was like a second, it was like web streaming, and then it was back to this engaging, what was happening. And I, and I'm looking at these numbers, which we just got to see for the first time now. I understand you had the, the polls close at, you had it end last night at midnight. But I'm looking, the largest cohort of a remote learning academy is middle school, 20%. 411 out of 2,056, if I have those numbers correctly, I wrote them quickly, have chosen remote learning academy. Those parents chose that, not based on turning on your computer and web, webcasting all day. So I'm, I'm trying to understand when that, the largest, the largest group is going to get to see videos because we're asking them to make these choices and these commitments to what they're planning for their students.
All right, we've got a couple other members who've got their hands up so we can circle back if you want.
I'll come back. I have other questions on another topic, but I'll, I'll...
Go circle back to you. Ms. Hirsch?
Oh, thank you. I wanted to ask a quick question. We've received quite a few emails and public comments in regards to our arts and music program. I just, you know, art and music are kind of key to student development. They're associated with games and math reading, cognitive ability, critical thinking, verbal skills, and so much more. Many of our students aren't as academically gifted, but are more gifted in, in the arts. With the revised guidance for general music, choral and instrumental instruction from the Connecticut State Department of Education in their seventh addendum for indoor instruction rehearsals, as well as guidance for outdoor instruction and performances, I was wondering how we're going to be addressing our arts and music programs going forward. I know we're not starting a year necessarily with an immediate instruction, but that addendum does specifically give guidance towards doing, you know, lessons in person and indoors. So I was wondering how we were going to revise our, our plans for that.
Yeah, if you, if you read it carefully, what we're doing is exactly what they're saying, is that making sure that we still offer music, and we are offering music, it is general music. But right now, we are very focused on the health and safety of children. You know, if we, if we want to change the model that we have starting the school year, then that's a different conversation. But chorus and band are both two areas that, if you just go back not a few weeks ago and the huge outbreak in Georgia, that had to do with singing and chanting, and they had half of the camp, you know, that was, that was infected. And we are being very conservative and careful and taking that guidance from the state. What will look like a month from now or two months from now, I honestly can't tell you what we're going to look like two weeks from now in the sense of what's happening with COVID. So we understand that the arts is critical. We're making sure students have that general music opportunity. And we have full faith in our teachers, that they're going to be amazing. We are looking at how we can extend... going to be amazing. We are looking at how we can extend after-school opportunities for kids, you know, where we have some stipends, just like we did with virtual athletics last year for our high school students. How can we offer some of that instrumental after-school clubs when we're virtual online? The high school has a excellent plan, you know, mapped out for how they're, how they're managing that and where they're doing their content and then going home and doing the rehearsals and sharing, you know, the video rehearsals and getting online together. So it, we know it's important to the community, just like athletics is. You know, I, I know that the CIAC is meeting tonight about athletics, and, you know, we, it's not just the arts, it's not just those two areas. It really is impacting all of our student activities, and we understand how important they are. So if we get to a point that we could have them back in person, we've, I mean, we've never said that we wouldn't do that. But right now, it really has to do with cohorting, social distancing. We don't even have room for the instrument cases in the buildings. You know, the students aren't, they're not using lockers, for instance, at middle school this year. There, we have, we literally yesterday had five storage units we had to order because we're having to move so much furniture out of the building, just because it's to social distancing classrooms and all of our spaces. We don't even have room for the stuff that's already in the building, and we don't have room even to store instruments. And we've had to absorb a lot of our spaces for other uses, so that when children are eating lunch, they do have six feet apart. So we have the commitment, and we understand how important it is, and we're hoping to have the virtual option once we know which teachers are willing to, to do some of that for us.
Okay. I just wanted to put it out there and make sure that, you know, as we move forward and we see the levels of, of, you know, transmission and whatever, that we really do make sure that we revisit this, because it is such an exceptionally important, important part of the program for our students, both at a younger age and all the way through high schools. You know, many of our students find their, their home in our arts programs. And I just wanted to thank you for, for addressing that. But, you know, we do need to focus on that. So I'd like to revisit that topic at some point. So, thank you.
And I'll just plug the, the jazz band videos that Greenwich High School made last year in the spring that were just utterly amazing. So we, we know there's probably some ways to do this. Ms. Downey.
I'm going to follow up on my, the two, two ladies have already spoken. Right. I actually was going to make the same point that Karen just did about the music program, because I didn't think we just said we're not having it all year. I thought it was just initially, because I am troubled by, we can't, you know, obviously the way the world goes is the way the world goes. But to lose a whole year of instrumental instruction and choral instruction really harms our programs on a going-forward basis. So I think we do need to focus on finding a way to make those happen at some point. I understand we've got a lot of things going on at the start of school, and, and we're being conscious of health and safety first and foremost. But I agree with Karen that it should be a priority for us to revisit it, so that we don't lose the success that we've had in these programs consistently throughout the district for many, many years. And I was going to follow up on Megan's point about the middle school and high school secondary model. I think this is probably not what people envisioned initially about what the remote learning was going to be, but at the same time, the kids were going to be in front of a screen for a chunk of the day. So it's how was it going to happen? So I'm pleased that the way you've thought it through is this is about preserving flexibility for our families. For a student who wants to come back into a middle school, you know, they're already assigned to a class and they've got a relationship with a teacher and, and the high school. So while it's evolved in a different direction than people anticipated, it seems to make a lot of sense to me. Another point I wanted to say, I had a question about our, when are we going to get some update on the costs of all of this? Maybe we need additional, we still need more cameras. I mean, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of equipment and a lot of things you're talking about being purchased. So when do you think we would be seeing a cost update? Because I think it behooves us to know what that is going into, you know, the RTM is meeting in September, the BET is going to start meeting just to see where we are on those.
Yeah, we, we do keep up with all of our COVID expenses. As a matter of fact, our CARES application just went in today. So we updated that chart that has our expenses on it. And at every business meeting, when we talk, when we do the monthly financial, we are going to also do the monthly COVID update budget.
Okay, okay. No, just because we also, to the extent we need to go in for an interim, I think that's, we don't, you know, we don't want to be caught off guard, nor does the BET, nor does the RTM. So I think at some point in September, I think we should have, or I guess maybe at our September meeting, we'll have a discussion about the financials, because that'll probably be part of the regular monthly financial report. So, thank you, Tony, for all you're doing. I know you're working. I hope you're sleeping.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Scher.
I don't even know where to start with this. I've got more questions now than before I arrived at this meeting. We're going to be here for a while, because I, I won't move off this subject until these questions are, are answered. Tony, I'm, I, I need some, I need some really specific answers, because I am thoroughly confused. I had expected we would come to this meeting and you would be presenting the full and comprehensive plan to reopen schools. I didn't think we'd be getting a couple slides, it's an update. So I'm going to back up. I want to talk about music. I want to talk about some things you said about after-school. I want to talk about teachers. I want to talk about the remote school. But let's just take these one at a time. You presented a video, and I'm thoroughly confused now about how we're actually going to be teaching kids. So can we break this down? Let's talk about elementary first. Let's talk about middle school. Then let's talk about high school. So in the elementary school, you're going to have kids in a building, normal school as used to be, correct?
Yes, if they chose that option.
Right. And those kids are not co-horted, they're coming five days a week.
Well, cohort is the children that they are with inside the classroom. So yes, they are in a cohort.
But they're...
A classroom, yes.
Right. You're having all students who apply to that arrive at the school, and they're going to go five days a week as they did before.
Yes, if a parent chose that, absolutely.
Okay. And then for those students who chose remote distance learning, you're putting them in a separate school, correct?
They actually have a teacher assigned to them for elementary, so that they are online with that teacher, just like a regular elementary teacher would be. Yes.
Okay. So, and those teachers are not tied to any specific school, correct?
Well, they, they come from one of our schools, so...
I, I understand that. But there isn't a, here's your teacher, and all of you are North Streets students in this class. And here's your teacher for North Myanis Grade One. Here's your teacher for North Street Grade One. Here's your remote, if you're, if you're, if you're those kids, you're going to be in the remote school, and you're going to be assigned a Grade One teacher regardless of what school is your home school, correct?
Yes, because we have teachers that are teaching remote.
Correct. Okay. And they're, they're going to be taught on, using, they're going to be taught every day using the model that was Ms. Jackaloff, right? That you showed in your video?
Well, both of those models are actually done through Google meets. They both have cameras. So you could, you know, the Google meets is generally what elementary teachers will utilize that, along with some of those other platforms when the children are online, like Seesaw, which was new for us last spring. And children and teachers overwhelmingly really liked it, because that helped our littlest learners be more independent. So they use some of those platform software as well. But we also could have a teacher who has a calendar that they've, you know, made at home, and they want to do their calendar standing up and, and like they're actually, where it looks like they're physically in a room. And it could look like they're actually, you know, standing up. I mean, that's, that's up to the teacher and how they want to teach. I think you're going to see, the main thing is they're live online with children.
I think that, but Tony, sorry, I'm just trying to get to specifics, because there's so much confusion around this. Your video just presented three models, correct?
What we're showing you is basically online, online teaching to give people an understanding that they're going to be able to see their teacher, it's going to be good quality audio, that they're going to be able to engage with the teacher. And I'm, Ms. Scher, I'm not, I'm not really sure that I can explain it much, much more than that. And, I mean, that's, that's why we tried to give you a visual of it, so...
I think it's a simple question, though, Tony. The question is, if you had three models, each of them have different types of engagement with the student?
Well, every day, teachers engage differently with students. Thank goodness, they don't do the same thing every day, every lesson. And, you know, that's part of being creative and innovative and being a great teacher. So yes, you're going to see pieces from our teachers, and that's what we would expect. They don't use the same thing every single day. It would get really...
So what you're really telling me is this is now up to the teacher. And if a student is in middle school or in elementary school, they might wind up getting livestream and no interaction in the classroom.
No, I've never said that, actually. I mean, I, I would hate for you to actually put that out there, because that's not accurate. We, we don't want a teacher that just doesn't interact with children. And that absolutely has never on any of our focus groups. And I know a lot of board members have watched a lot of our focus groups and heard us explain this over and over, because we've been online for hours over the last month and a half. And, you know, when we talk about these, we have never said it's going to be static, or children are just watching a video.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tony. In the very last meeting, and the two meetings before, you told me at the high school that there would be streamed classes for kids who are in the cohort. They would not be allowed to interact with the teacher. They would have to do that off-hours. Now I'm hearing from you something completely different. I'm sorry if I'm confused.
Yeah.
Really, I need you, I need you, Tony, excuse me, I need you, Tony, to please be specific. I'm looking for clarity. This ambiguity is actually not helping. And I will tell you, as you know, there are lots of parents who are very uncomfortable with the level of ambiguity, and I'm trying to echo that to you. But I, what I'm hearing is, I'm not hearing clarity, and I'm asking for clarity.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Scher. And I will actually say, when we met at our last meeting, I probably didn't answer that question as well as I could have, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to show a video tonight. But I will say, you know, we have hundreds of questions. I've been on an awful lot of, again, live Q and As, and I do not have a lot of people asking the question that you're asking tonight. So I know that you may be talking to a different group, but it definitely has not been a, a big topic of conversation, once we've been able to explain that our teachers are going to be on with our children, they are going to be interacting, and we're going to have a high-quality program for our children.
All right. Mr. Scher, I'm going to move to another member, and we'll circle back to you, because we've got a couple other hands up. Mr. Kelly.
Hi. Hi, Tony. My, my question is somewhat forward-looking. It's rather hard question, and it has to do with what, we're making lots of precautions, tons of precautions. We're working real hard to protect our children. When school starts on September 8th, what I want to do is look one week, two weeks, three weeks forward, and I want you to explain two scenarios for me, if you could. And it's, this question's going to be hard. I told you that in advance. So, so to your best of your ability, answer, what are we expecting to happen, week one, week two, week three, if our precautions are successful? And we have managed to, to manage school in a positive way. And as a second part of that question, looking forward again, with the same timeframe, what if it goes wrong? If things go in the wrong direction, if we have a bad, what does bad look like? So if you explain what good looks like week after week, and then what bad looks like week after week. So basically, we're prepared. As having a, a business background and a coaching background, I like to prepare for the big game. So this is kind of like looking forward and trying to understand and get ready for the big game. So, so if you could sort of figure, answer that as best as you can, I'd appreciate it.
I will. And, you know, I was a high school athlete. I loved athletics, and this is the biggest game I have ever been in, ever. We really have three different levels. We have full in-person, then we have hybrid, which is where our high school is right now, and then we have full remote. And we've been advised that we must be very nimble, flexible to, on a day's notice, to be able to move. And it would probably take us 24 hours, when I say a day's notice, because if we moved from one level, for instance, hybrid, and then we had to go full remote, because let's say there was an outbreak in the high school and there were enough positive cases, the Department of Health actually advises us on that. And they use the state-level guidance, they use local-level guidance, and they help let me know how many cases and what, and what's happening. It could be one building. That could be different. We could have one elementary where we have some positive cases, and they feel like the whole building needs to go to remote for two, two full weeks, and the teacher literally moves to remote with all of her, or his children, and they continue the learning. So it is being very, very flexible. So looking at worst-case scenario, the worst-case scenario is they tell us that we have to shut down for, for any, for any reason. It could be health department. The other thing is there are secondary factors. And the secondary factors could be, let's say we're starting flu season, we have so many teachers who are now falling ill with the flu, and we don't have enough substitutes. That could also push us full remote, and then we would have to look a little bit differently. But we, it literally is going to be day by day and week by week determining what the status is according to what COVID does, if we don't have the immunization. And I think that's one reason, you know, about working so hard in Greenwich, trying to get our children back in for those parents that want to be there, because our infection rate is very low right now. You know, our Department of Health locally, our State Department of Health, Dr. Fauci, you know, weighed in specifically on Connecticut, they've all said that it is a safe return. And so if we can do it, we really, we really want to be successful, because we don't know what it's going to look like in four weeks or six weeks. And developing relationships at the very beginning of the year with a teacher, which I know you know as a coach, is so important. And, you know, going, I, I look at some of the districts that are going full remote, starting the first day of school, the relationship is very different when you're trying to do that, you know, on, online for school versus being in person. And it takes a little bit of a different approach. And having an entire district do that, you, it's great if you can have the relationship first. So we're really trying that for those parents that want that option.
So Tony, we went over what, if it goes wrong, if things, if we break that, tell me, give me the, well, obviously, I'm always optimistic as we know, and I'd like to hear the, the optimistic, what it's going to look like, week one, week two, week three, week four, when we know we've actually kicked this thing's butt moving forward.
Yeah. I mean, I think, again, it'll be working with the Department of Health, it depend on the governor's orders, you know, are they allowing us to loosen up? And does everybody feel comfortable being able to, for instance, go from a grouping of 10 to groupings of 50? Or let's say we start, I don't know what the CIAC will decide for athletics tonight, but let's say they tell us we can only start with groups of 10. Once the health department tells us, we can start having groupings of 50 or 60, then we'll move to those levels. But it's going to be a constant analysis. And it kind of goes even along with that music question, you know, it's trying to make sure that the safety measures are there. But one of the things that is challenging is, I don't think this school year, and I could be wrong, that they're going to move us away from social distancing and cohorting, because I don't think the immunization will come fast enough. And that in itself has a lot of impacts of how we move around the building, the space that we have available. But if we are allowed to loosen up in some areas and everybody feels safe about it, we absolutely will. And I think that's also, it's hard just going back. People are very, very nervous right now. And I think that's part of, you know, for us to start moving forward, is we've got to be able to step foot back in a building again. And, you know, I look even here at Havemeyer, and we were here from March to June with about four of us that were here every day. And it was a little nervous when we opened back up, everybody starts coming back. And, you know, we have to work through that, and it's going to be baby steps, and I think all year long.
Well, we're not the only district going back, so we'll have a lot of data from other districts as well throughout, across the country. So we'll keep on the edge of our chair. If things are, are going positive and it looks like we can get back to normality, let's not delay a second and jump on that normality. Thank you very much for your answer.
You're welcome.
And all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Kowalski.
Sure. Hey, hi, Dr. Jones. How are you?
Good.
So I didn't do, I didn't total up the very, the numbers at the very beginning where we said the, the number of kids that were opting out to do the virtual, complete virtual school versus the kids that are staying in. I got the total number of students is about 8,700, and I thought I grabbed 20% of those kids are going to, or have opted for the virtual school. Is that accurate?
I'm just trying to find, I don't have my slide in front of me, so I'm trying to find the right sheet for you.
Yeah, that's fine. Because here's, here's the question while you're looking for that, which is, if it's 20%, I calculated that to be about 1,700 kids that are opting out to do virtual school. And, sorry, I shouldn't use the word opting out. That would be inappropriate. Those children whose parents have chose, have decided the virtual school fits for their family. And then I'm looking at the number of teachers that you say are going remote. That's 27 teachers are going remote?
Well, it's much more complex than that, so.
I figured, because I was dividing the 20% by the 27 teachers, which ends up with 64 kids in a class, and your pictures, which were, you know, you seem to show a positive light on how virtual learning would look, were kids of four, six, which are easily manageable when you have one teacher. But if you're putting 64 kids in a class with one teacher, yeah, that's not happening.
Yeah, no, that's not happening at all. And that's why, even in secondary, it makes it actually quite simplistic, because the kids are following their normal schedule. So, because they're hybrid, let's say a class has 24 in it normally. So on Wednesday, all 24 would be online together, because they'll be able to see each other and see everybody that's in their class. On Monday, Tuesday, that would be 12. But even of that 12, you may have three who are home remote, because the parents and the family has made the decision, they're not quite ready for them to come back. But when they want to come back, that seat is there to add that seat for number 12 or number 13. So in elementary, it's following the standard classroom, class-size guidance, and the classes are being formulated. With the number that we were asking for about teachers that, for the exemptions, those are just teachers that are guaranteed to be able to have that medical exemption. So they, we have to allow them by law to teach from home. But we will have other staff members also who choose to be remote. And we asked that very early on.
Okay.
And we're in that process, I want to say to Karen, in case our staff are watching, that is literally the work today and tomorrow, because we didn't know how many, like I say, we ended up 1,550. We didn't know really how many were going to, were going to go in this direction. And so we're doing all the staffing, we're working on that now.
Okay. So I just want to try to break it, break it down in simplest. So for our distance learning, we'll have, the elementary kids will have, they will be divided by their grade, and they will have an assigned teacher, and they will interact, and the school bell will go off at 8:45 a.m., like it does normally, and the day will go until, what, 3 o'clock?
I would have to have Mark chime in on the schedule. Keep in mind, the elementaries don't all start at the same time. Yeah, but they're on a normal schedule, yes.
So, yeah, that's my question, Mark. My question is trying to understand, what does the virtual school look like at each level? Because I'm trying to understand, from an elementary standpoint, and then I think middle school and high school might get easier, but elementary school, do the kids sit on, do they, are they going to need their, how, you know, how much interaction are you going to need from the parents to help them get on? Like, what is, what are we envisioning here?
All great questions, Karen. So let me start with, so Dr. Jones shared with you that pre-K through 5, we have 694 students. That's our current number. Let's back out the pre-K students for a minute there, and that's, that's still, now, if you think about it, that's the largest elementary school that we're going to have in Greenwich. So, you know, if you try to think about how many sections that will be, and, 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 Dr. Jones, I don't, I don't think you have a problem with me kind of taking them through this, you know, we're looking at building a school from scratch, starting now, for probably the likelihood of 29, 30 sections, you know, don't quote me on that specific number, but it's going to be the largest school in town. That said, to answer your question specifically about the schedule, if you remember back to either our last meeting or the meeting before that, when I showed you the conceptual model of what a remote schedule would look like?
Yeah.
We're creating a remote schedule that would allow us to mirror very similarly to what a student would experience if they were in school. Now, that's operating under a couple of assumptions, Karen. At a school that size, the number of staff required to run a school, obviously, gets a little challenging. So if you have, let's, let's just call it 30 sections, okay? So you obviously need 30 general education teachers. Then you have to think of all the auxiliary staff you would need, if you want to run this school, so that it looks exactly the way school looks in the physical realm. You have to have a certain number of art teachers, music teachers, PE teachers, literacy specials, you have to have all of the accoutrements that come with the package of a physical school. Now, we have to look from a human resources standpoint on what realistically and reasonably we can actually do to staff our remote school. We know we're going to have a core teacher. Children are going to log into their Google Classroom. And, you know, and I know, Mr. Scher, this is probably going to bore you, because this is your background, but Google Classroom came online, I think they released it in 2014. It was meant to be a free web service developed by Google Schools. The goal was simply to create a simplified way of distributing and grading assignments, but it has grown so much more since then. It's really an elaborate platform. And much like our platform for our Board of Education meetings is to meet in Zoom, the morning will start for our kids in the virtual school in their Google Classroom. They'll take attendance, they'll have a morning meeting, they'll all see each other, just like we're seeing each other right now. There'll be an opportunity to build that community, albeit from a distance, they'll have that opportunity to build a community. They'll share what they were doing over the weekend. They might share something that they watched on television, that they had a reaction to, that they want to share with their classmates. But it's, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mark, because this is helpful. So it's this interact, they have that direct interaction throughout the course of the day, depending upon the schedule. So if we get to middle school, middle school will be different, because they'll, they'll jump from class to class. So they'll have a schedule as if they were in a physical school, and they will go from, they will go from class to class. Same thing with high school.
So I want to be really precise with what I say here, because I know we have over 300 people online, and I want to make sure the board understands this. The way the middle school and the high school are operating for remote learning students, those students are using the exact same schedule that they would have if they were actually in school, so that the transition in and out would be seamless.
Okay. So the teachers, who are their teachers? In the middle school and the high school?
So if I'm Mark D'Amico, and I'm the sixth-grade geometry teacher, and I have Karen Kowalski in my class, it doesn't matter if Karen is coming to the school for her lesson, or if she's at home. She has the same access to the teacher at the exact same time. It's the same teacher.
Okay. So now, now my next question is really important. I don't understand the problem that you're writing on the board. Can I raise my hand? Will you be able to acknowledge it, and then say, Karen, great question, let me help you? Just as if Ms. Stowe were sitting in the front seat of your classroom, and be able to ask the same question?
So yes, Google Classroom has the raise the hand feature that they're bringing online. That's why we're, we are engaging Google Classroom Enterprise, the suite version. The idea here, and we've been, we've been test, beta-testing this in classrooms at the middle school, the high school, we've been doing it at the boardroom as well, positioning the computer so that it's similar to where a student would be seated. So much like a teacher scans the classroom for someone who's raising their hand, they can look down at the keyboard and see that someone has raised their hand, much like you do in the Board of Ed, in the meetings. And the teacher can, can call on that student. You could also use the chat feature, where the student's question can automatically come up. And I could be in the middle of the conversation with the class and say, Karen has a question, I want to restate the question, so everyone hears it, and now I want to answer it, so everybody, whoever might have also had this question, now has the answer. So it is working two different sets of students, but I'm confident our teachers can do that.
Okay. So then, you, I know we had this two-week transition. So let's say our remote learner, they've decided now I want to go physically, be physically present, and vice versa, a physically present decides to be a remote learner. That transition should be seamless, and shouldn't be two weeks, because they have the same schedule, they're just going to change from being like we are now versus sitting in a classroom. Is that fair?
So again, I want to be precise with that. Are you talking about a middle school student, a high school student, or an elementary student?
Okay, yes, middle school. Let's stick with middle school for now.
Can I actually answer that one? Because I work on all the facilities side with Facilities Team. And one of the things that we're doing is, we have, again, we have, you know, 1,500 students who are going remote. So what we're making sure is that the students who are in person, if we, if we're only going to have 16 children who are physically present, we only want 16 desks in there on the first week of school.
I see.
So what we, what we want to make sure, let's say, we all of a sudden had 100 students that, you know, wanted to come back the very next day. We just want to make sure we have the furniture, it's faced, you know, it's spaced correctly. Their schedule, actually going from face-to-face to remote will be super easy. It's, I think it will still be very easy coming from remote back in, especially in secondary. It's just, again, making sure the room is appropriately set up. Because if we had four students all of a sudden show up, we don't want them to show up, and then all of a sudden, there's, you don't have those four additional desks back in the room.
So that would work for the same for high school as well, right? They would have, forgive the doc, they would have the same concept of the same interaction, virtual learning that we just talked about, Mark, and then we would have to be able to do the same transitioning, and it's a matter of spacing, making sure we have adequate spacing components and set up in that way. So their teacher stays the same. So let's step back, and let's go to the elementary school. I have decided to keep my youngest home for virtual learning, but I've decided now it's safe, and I'm sending her back to school in the physical sense. So how does that work? Because you have an entirely separate school. Now she has, it's like, come, you know, for a young kid, it's come, it's like, I'm changing schools. I have new friends, and I have a new teacher, and I have everything. How, how is that transition work? Is that going to happen? Particularly because they could be at, they could be at different level, not necessarily levels, but on different subject matters and different stages of learning.
Karen, you're absolutely right. Pacing is certainly something that we have to be careful about and cognizant about, because of the fact that, here's, here's how, the comparison I would draw. Let's say, Karen, that you were in a school in Greenwich, but your family moved to Stanford, and you were a third grader in Greenwich, but now you're moving to Stanford, and you're in a new classroom. It's still a third-grade classroom, but obviously the pacing may be a little different. The, the challenge will be for the teacher who is sending a student back from their remote classroom to the physical classroom, to help that teacher transition and understand what they were covering, to, to support the student as they're onboarding into the physical sense. It could be a little bumpy there, Karen. I'm certainly not going to create an illusion that that will be seamless. But we do understand and appreciate the fact that the pacing might be slightly off. Similarly, to the way that even if you moved from one school in Greenwich to a, to a different school in Greenwich, again, third, third-grade curriculum's being taught, but the pacing of a singular class is dictated by the level of performance of those students, how quickly they ascertain material, how often a group of students is out, which might slow the pacing. So that, that is certainly one thing that I'm going to be paying close attention to, and the building principals and assistant principals, and even the school psychologist, because when you think of it from a social, emotional standpoint, it's going to be hard for a student who was at home learning, and when it was time for break, they might have been able to go to their, their bedroom and take a nap, and they get to eat lunch in their, their kitchen, maybe watch a little TV. But when they go back to the physical school, the rigors and demands are a little bit more stringent, and there aren't those opportunities for that downtime. We have to pay attention to that.
Okay. Mr. Bernstein, I have one last question, and I'll release the floor, I promise. So my last question is, Dr. Jones, and I'll have more, but now, let's say, following up on Mr. Kelly's question, if we have to go into full remote learning very quickly, I think the way you have this set up for the middle school and high school seems like it would be somewhat easy, because you have a situation where your distance learners are already, you're just going to have them all distance learning. So it, there might be some issues there. But with respect to the elementary school, I think you're going, it's unclear to me how that ultimately works.
They actually stay with their teachers. So if we go full remote, and you've been with a remote teacher, you stay with your remote teacher. If you have been face-to-face with that teacher, you stay with that teacher. So it will be seamless. They stay within their same groupings, in their same cluster of students with the same teacher. I do want to add one thing, because I think it is important, because you talked about how it feels like you're going into a new school. And although they, they may be changing teacher, if they go back face-to-face, one thing that we are doing is, we create our remote class list. And, and, you know, we're working very feverishly on that right now, is making sure that if we have 12 second graders, for instance, from Glenville, that all chose remote, all 12 of those children are in their, their remote class together, and it may have some children from another school, but we're balancing. So they're going to see friends that they had, you know, last year in their school, most likely, so that when they come back into school, they're still going to be, obviously, with those friends that they saw last year. So it's not as, it's not like we're taking one student, and we're mixing from all 11 buildings. And the children, when they're remote, are not going to know anybody or see any friends. Even if there are only four or five from a grade level, those four or five will be together from one school.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. D'Amico, I know you thought you were done being a principal, but it sounds like you're stepping right back again. Thank you for that. Ms. Hirsch?
Sorry. My question may be rather similar to what Ms. Kowalski just asked, but I just wanted to confirm. I know that we've had, you noted at the start of the meeting, that, I'm just double-checking, I think you had 27 teachers, you noted that qualified to opt out under the federal guidelines. And I'm sure that not all of those teachers are elementary school teachers. So I just wanted to make sure, I don't know how many teachers we might need for a remote learning academy for elementary school, as well as what our teachers who qualify to opt out to be remote teachers for our high school and middle schools will be doing. Because I know that we may be streaming some of those classes, but I assume for our remote learners at the middle and high school level, they may also have some direct instruction at some point from teachers. Can you sort of address that question?
Well, we're working, because it, right now, we literally just completed the HR meeting. So we know what those content areas are, we're working through those teachers that must be remote. We could have, and I know I said this early on, we could have a teacher where, for a content area, it's a very difficult to fill content area. We may, for that teacher, we would either have to do reverse remote, which means that basically the children, the students, young people at the high school, are sitting, you know, in a room on a Google Meets with that teacher, because it's either that or you cancel the course. And we could have a few areas like that, that are just unique certified courses. And that's what we're working through right now, is of those, of those staff members, how many are in that situation? And it generally will be like either a super-high-level math, world language, you know, that you just have very few sections. It's in those types of areas.
And, you know, I know that there's been a lot of news out of other states and questions, and I don't know if we've gotten any guidance from the Department of Health in Greenwich or State of Connecticut's Department of Health, in regards to things like, I know we've discussed that, the possibility of vaccination for COVID, but we know flu season here can be a real joy, and other states are starting to require flu vaccinations for students. I don't know if we've gotten any sort of guidance in regards to that, to sort of help keep the sniffles out of our schools as much as possible. You know, I don't know if there's anything that you have received on, on that, from the state guidance.
Yeah, really, there has not been anything from the state level about requiring people to take the flu shot. That would still be optional as it stands right now. They have said they do believe flu season, which they're saying everywhere, not just in Connecticut, will be challenging, because the symptoms are similar to COVID. So if we start having a large flu outbreak, it could push us to remote for a few weeks, just simply because they're unclear who's having which type of symptoms. But I will say, our nursing staff are doing some really in-depth training, so that they can be better at understanding, you know, more to a finite level, what the differences are in those symptoms that a student would show.
Okay. And then I had one other question, and almost just sort of, where did it go? I know you're talking about the, for flu vaccinations and things like that. I guess it was also in regards to testing for COVID. I guess it was also in regards to testing for COVID. You know, I know that, I just was wondering if you could address, because I know that some, I've received questions and comments from parents wondering why we are not requiring testing. And I know that there was some guidance directed, I think, from the state on that. So I don't know if you have any information on that or can share that with us?
Yeah, I will share. We can't require COVID testing in a, you know, a public school. What I will say is, Mary Keller has been working the last couple of weeks with me trying to see if we can get a van that, for those teachers and/or students and families that want to have their student tested and they use their health insurance. For a staff member that wants to, they use their health insurance. If there is a family who does not have health insurance, it would be covered. And they would come onsite on three different points in time. For us right now, we were looking at possibly, it would be the second full week of school, but we have not solidified that date. And if we can make that service available, I think for some families and teachers, they would probably take advantage of that. So we are working on that right now. It's not easy to get those vans, to actually get them scheduled, because they're in such high demand.
And anything that we can do to try to support our healthy reentry to our schools, I know would probably go a long way. So thank you for addressing that.
You're welcome.
And I'll just note, Massachusetts, I believe, yesterday declared that they're requiring vaccinations for students. Something to watch. All right, Ms. Olson?
Took me a second to unmute. So I have follow-up questions with remote learning. First of all, Mark D'Amico, I'm very impressed with what the elementary school plan that you've presented. My questions really, and my concerns really are falling amongst the secondary and primarily amongst the middle school, because high school's hybrid. I do have concerns with the high school plan as it stands. First off, I guess, how does, Tony, you mentioned webcasting goes full remote on a dime. How do you, that middle school could go full remote on a dime? How does, how do you take webcasting, which is in the classroom, and then just suddenly have a robust remote program? Should we need to do that?
And, because it's all inside the same platform. So it's all Google Meets. And whether or not you're sitting in front of a computer or you're sitting in front of a webcam, when a teacher, for instance, goes to create breakout groups in their live class, that's the exact same type of skill they're going to have if we ended up going full remote. And our teachers had a lot of practice, you know, last spring and have continued, you know, training through the summer. And they approached some things perhaps differently because they would use some more platforms, for instance, just to make it more interesting for students if it was straight like the meeting that we're having right now. But it should not be difficult, because it's really the same skill set. You still have to know how to use Google Meets, how to use Google Classroom or Schoology in secondary. Some of our teachers still use Schoology as well.
So why aren't we using those interactive platforms with our Remote Learning Academy at the secondary and secondary level? Because there is more engagement there, you know. With your experience in education, I know you know that it's not simple. You call this simplistic, but I'm not sure it's the best educational. Don't mind the noise in the background. My youngest slept till 6:00 PM on his nap, so gearing up for tonight. So I'm not sure, and also not sure it allows for flexibility. Because if you have the same exact schedule, I understand you're saying to move in and out. But if the exact same schedule, let's say I'm a Remote Learning Academy seventh grader and I get on, I log on and I'm, there I am. And I expect to eat lunch with everybody, I think I was told. I'm not sure. I'll ask you that as well. And also, I'm just watching. I may raise my hand here or there. But I'm not engaged in the way that I would be if you were using the tools that they're using at the elementary school level, correct?
No, that's not correct, because it is the same tool. So if I'm a high school teacher, I could start out greeting my students. I'm going to say it's a teacher that's on a whiteboard. And I'm putting on my, on my smartboard are my Google Meet students, so I can actually see them really easy. So they can ask a question, because they're live, just like the live students in your classroom. And then after I've done my direct instruction, then I want to get into these breakout groups. And I am going to have my breakout groups set up so that two students who are at home, two students who are actually in the classroom can be in the same breakout group. So that they're actually collaborating on, you know, a critical question. It could be any type of research that they're doing. And then those breakout groups end. And I will say it's been really good for administration, because we've been in this in our training the last two days. Our trainer was using breakout groups. So people, I think administrators now even have a better idea. And in those breakout groups, you come back together. And then you're, you know, you're having that follow-up discussion. And, you know, the secondary periods are not that long. Like, when you think of elementary, you have your children all day. You're talking 40, I would say like 47 minutes. It actually goes, it really goes pretty fast. And I have full confidence that our teachers are going to be able to make it interactive, just like. The hardest thing, I think, actually, is going to be just the different environment that we're in, where the level of collaboration, you have to have a little bit of distance. You know, it's not like you can all be around four students around a table. They're going to be spread out a little bit more. The teacher's definitely going to teach probably more from the front than they have, you know, in the last 15 years. So there are some differences. And I think that's where you'll see some of that quizzing, whether that's Quizlet, whether that's. There are a ton of different platforms, which I know.
No, I know, because I've been doing them and I've done, I've experienced the breakout rooms and all of that. I just, I don't think it allows for a ton of flexibility in a way, because they're set to that schedule. Whereas a Remote Learning Academy may have 30 minutes of direct instruction. Then they have asynchronous time and they have, they have it built in. It's just a different, I don't, not sure, I'm not not sure. I really don't believe it's the best model for secondary, secondary students. I still, I'm still wondering what that percentage is. Or I guess you're saying that they do just, they're online all day. I know you're saying engage with live teaching, but they don't have that flexibility to that asynchronous time that they work on their own at their own time, necessarily.
I think part of that is really also being very responsive to the community. We're doing exactly what, you know, they wanted. They wanted students to be on a schedule. And they still, you're going to have passing time where they can, you know, hop off the computer. They can, you know, run to the restroom, get a snack, come back for the next class. They are going to have, you know, that lunch break, which when the high school shared their schedule, they have the period, I think it was 50 minutes, and then 30 minutes. That 30 minutes is downtime for the students. They have the SEL block at the end of the day, which is much more relaxing for students. So.
This is where I have to agree, though, with Mr. D'Amico, that the 50/50 is the best plan, which is why I would have loved to seen that carried all the way through. I have a question about grading. I know that we had said earlier in July that there would be a plan made for grading, considering the uneven conditions for remote learning. So what is, can you speak a moment on that plan?
Yeah, that was a question that the board asked. We never actually stated that. And our grading is, and Mr. Mayo, I think, addressed at the last meeting, that we're not adjusting how we grade. We need to make sure that our remote learners and our, you know, in-person learners are, you know, are learning at the same rate. And it's really making sure that if we're giving an assessment, that there's, you know, a secure platform that we're testing on, which we do have this year through Linkit, which we haven't had in the past, where we can put some common assessments, you know, inside Linkit. So we're doing those things, but no, we're not. An adjustment to grading would be only if the board at some point, like you did last year, decided that, you know, what was happening with COVID was, I think, more than people anticipated. And then, you know, we would bring that to you at that time.
That was just something that I had read that was sent on July 17th by administration. So that's why it was said. I'd read it, but I just wanted to. So we're not doing that at this point. I just wanted to be clear. I do have a couple of questions around safety, but I'll let, I'll go on to someone else. You can circle back to me.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. All right. Mr. Scher?
Mark, thank you for that description. It was actually remarkably helpful. It's, I think, what people have been looking for. I'm kind of shocked by the statement that says the questions that I'm asking and that others are asking are not the questions that are being asked by parents. I don't know, I don't know about anybody else, but my mailbox and my telephone are hanging or filling up with people asking these questions. So I guess I'm just a magnet for a small minority. But, you know, I don't get it. Mark, going back to a couple of your questions. So you were talking about how kids can move in and out seamlessly. So I take it the statements about it will take 14 days for someone to move from in-building to remote? And from remote back into building is no longer valid?
I don't think it'll take 14 days. I would imagine there's probably, there would be, there would be a need for really unique circumstances to require that long of a delay. I'll go back to one of the things that we did in the background. We built our class rosters with the assumption that all students at any time could be present. So we already have the students who are in the remote learning school rostered on a list of, class lists in the physical school. So identifying where they would go, very simple, Peter. The slight constraint is making sure that there's physical space, that we have a desk for them, that it doesn't cause overcrowding in a particular room. But again, you know, the things that I'm bringing up should easily be problem-solved within a day. I really can't imagine where it would take more than a, more than a couple of days. But again, I also don't know that I'm assuming all of the conditions that we could be presented with. So that said, I would think we could probably do it in much less than 14 days. But you might ask me this question again in mid-September, Peter. And I might say, I've learned something new and here's a circumstance where it actually did take us to two full weeks.
No, and, Mark, it was just, I get the part of going back into a building. The coming out of a building, when someone said it's going to take 14 days. I mean, that was just a bizarre statement, so, but I appreciate the clarification. Going back to this question about rostered in the building, because that's the next one, right? If everybody comes back, right? And I don't think that will happen. But where are the limits of us to be able to accommodate that? Because our school buildings were not built for standard CDC guideline, six feet social distancing in every classroom. I mean, that's just, that's just a reality. So where does this, where are the limits if people decide to come back?
If I can answer that, since I've been working on the facilities. There, the limit for K-8, there really isn't a limit, because all of the class sizes, all of the classes have been set. And we, the rosters are there. And the classroom furniture was initially set and measured out to make sure the number of students rostered fit in that space. So if we had a classroom, for instance, that was going to have 22 students and we knew that we couldn't get that three to six feet in that classroom, then that classroom space was moved to a larger space. For instance, at Western, where our sixth grade normally is, there's smaller rooms. So we've moved those sixth grades to other rooms in the building that are larger so that if it was rostered for 20 students and let's say five of those students are on remote learning, they all five come back, we can definitely accommodate them in the space. And we're using a space all over our buildings. We're using media centers differently. We're using art rooms differently. So we're capturing all of our space. At the high school, if we are still under social distancing and the type of requirements that we have now from the health department, they would stay hybrid all year long unless those restrictions are lifted. Because in the high school, we could not bring our entire high school back under those restrictions.
The other question, Mark, I had for you was, when you get to a place, obviously, where you're doing a unified classroom, which is something some of us have been talking about for a long, long time, at the unified classroom at the high school, in unified classroom at the middle school, the only place we're left with this separate online school is actually at the elementary school. So why didn't we just scrap doing it separately and apply the same model to, apply the same model to elementary? What was the rationale not to do that and have a separate thing at elementary?
So I think it's, it comes back to being developmentally appropriate. And so when you think about asking a four-and-a-half or five-year-old to sit in front of a screen for an extended period of time, knowing that the way we, our service delivery model works at the elementary level, it really wasn't conducive or really best practice. Obviously, at the middle school and the high school level, kids can attend for longer periods of time. They can sit and focus for longer periods of time. But at the elementary level, and particularly, Peter, I'm mostly concerned with our primary grades, our kindergartners, our first and second graders.
Sure.
I don't, I don't see that, if I think about the benefit versus the detriment, I think there's more of a detriment there than benefit.
So that's going to be two separate experiences where middle school and high school will be the same. And then particularly at middle school, I went back and wrote it down. There were two contrasted technologies, two contrasted models. One was called conferencing and one was called streaming. Well, you're telling me at the middle school, one is interactive, one's watching television. So what I heard you say is that the middle school, because I know you're not responsible for the high school, that the middle school everywhere, if you're remote, you can expect to be on the conferencing model, which is what you said was, a teacher, they're going to have a monitor in their room. They're going to have all these students on there. They're going to set it up from in front of where they are, as well as the students that are in the room, so that they can interact with those students. Those students can ask questions as the lesson is going along, the same way you could if you're in the building. That's what you, is that right? That's what you said?
Yeah. To clarify, we've beta-tested at the middle school and the high school what you're calling the conferencing model, where there's two-way exchange of information. So we actually feel that we can do that at both levels. And so students six through 12 should have that same experience, Peter.
Okay. And the, as a result, you'd said you'll also be using that technology. You're fully leveraging the technology. So I take it we will be, for those courses, we'll be recording those so that they're accessible to students who are either sick, unavailable, offline, having connection problems, whatever?
So I think Dr. Jones probably wants to take this one.
Yeah, we are not requiring teachers to record. That there is a challenge doing that. What we are, we encourage teachers if they want to record their lesson. However, it would be the direct instruction piece, not the entire 40 or 50 minutes. If a teacher, again, is encouraged just to make their life easier, because they could have students quarantining or, you know, being off for that two-week period where they're trying to keep up and so, and where they could be sick. And they would, the direct instruction portion, that 15, 20 minutes.
What's the challenge?
For the recording, it's been actually a legal discussion in the state of Connecticut with CEA and the teachers unions. There are no districts, no districts in this region, at least, that are making people record.
Okay. Can you provide, Tony, to the board, the written legal opinions and advice that you're referring to? Could you follow up on that and send that to us in the next day?
I can certainly see if there is a written document. Tom Mooney, who is our Board of Education attorney, leads our legal seminars. They share the legal opinions. I'm not sure if there's actually that as a written legal opinion. Definitely, it's been shared on the conferencing, but I will follow up, yes.
Okay, but now I'm a little confused. You referenced that there's a legal opinion and there's a challenge as a result, but it's not written anywhere, so why are we following that?
We're following, we follow the advice of the attorney, which generally every school district, you know, in the state does. And with COVID, they have had really two main firms that do a lot of, have done a lot of conferences with superintendents and being able, in school districts in general, HR, being able to advise us on the best way forward on those issues that are, we know are pressing issues at the state level. So when we hop on a conference call, obviously, there are many, many people from across the state. And we get that advice, so whether or not it's in writing, I will certainly check on it.
Yeah, but Tony, here's the thing. This thing has been said numerous times, and I just want to be really clear about this, okay? I understand, and I think everyone knows anyone around education, that the teacher union leadership, particularly the CEA, and I don't believe the GEA has done this, but I don't know. I haven't spoken to Carol Sutton about it. I know the CEA does not want, has recommended, they don't want teachers recorded. And the reason they don't want teachers recorded, or their stated reasons are, we don't want to have a record for purposes of assessment and accountability. That's fine. That's the union's point of view. Now, hold on. Let me finish, please. Okay?
I didn't say anything.
I know you didn't say anything. I can, I, what I'm more into. what I'm more interested in is putting our students first. Now, in the spring, many, many, many teachers in Greenwich Public Schools, because there was a ban on using Zoom to have lessons, recorded their lesson content and posted it on the internet. Many teachers did that. So I guess I'm a little concerned that as a district, if we're conducting these things, there's the infrastructure and we're recording it, and we have an infrastructure to post it, just like our board meetings are posted, like School-A-G or whatever, why we're not asking our teachers, if they're conducting a lesson, and I understand the part on the group discussion, we're not asking them as a standard to record that part of the lesson and posting it out on School-A-G so that it's available as an aid to a student if they need to follow up, see something in a lesson that was a complex subject, maybe they missed it. I really want to put students first, and that's putting students first. And I guess I'm a little puzzled about why, candidly, as a superintendent, you wouldn't be saying, guys, this is what we're doing. And then if someone wants to challenge us about that, let them challenge. I can't think of a scenario going the other way, making sense, when we're saying we want to put students first.
Yeah, so I can address that on a couple of levels. First and foremost, I want to get our teachers back in the building where they feel comfortable, where they feel safe to be back in the building, where they feel very comfortable using a webcam, which they have not used in the past, where they have an audio mic on. This is a very, this is a very different time that we are in. And we probably will have a lot of teachers that will choose to record. But right now, we are putting a lot on our teachers, and I am thinking about the students because the last thing I want to do is put so much on our teachers that their lessons don't go well. And for some teachers, just learning to use the webcam is going to make them nervous. It's a very, and experience, so.
Natural.
Saying is, let us get our doors open and allow our teachers to experience this new technology, and we're going to continue to grow, and we're doing everything that you asked, Mr. Scher. Last spring is exactly what we're doing, and we've made huge strides. We're very proud of where we are, and we will, once our teachers get back, we'll get ready to go.
On that note.
Here, we've got some other hands up.
I understand, I understand. Tony, when are you, can you lay out for us that teacher training schedule for all of the teachers in the district? I presume some will be trained at different times for essentially being able to deliver this technology using what's in your video. The first clip of your video is called conferencing, that's why I called it that. I wouldn't have called it that, but that's what's in your video. When will, what's the teacher training schedule for the 900 teachers across the district?
Yeah, we do have a schedule, and Mr. D'Amico, I don't know if you want to speak to that, or we want to just wait. And I know you've, we were just talking about this yesterday. It's very detailed. It will go out to, I think the teachers actually will get it next Monday. Is that correct, Mr. D'Amico?
So it's an extremely comprehensive professional learning plan that starts.
Can you give us the highlights, Mark?
Yeah, so the highlights are, we wanted to be sensitive to the fact that, and again, as a building principal, I always wanted to make sure I had enough time to meet with my staff and handle in-house information, whether it's, I want to talk to them about our school improvement plan, whether I want to review past success data, whether it's I want to set goals for the school from an SEL standpoint, whether it's just having vertical articulation meetings, and I hate to use the lingo, so let me just clarify, letting the receiving teachers talk to the sending teachers about student performance, all the things that we do to make sure we're confident and ready to get in front of the students on the first day. So we balance the number of hours that building principals will have with their staff to handle building-based needs. And in this case, it's a little bit more comprehensive because they have to go over all of the COVID training, all of the health and safety precautions, and physically look at and identify the way they're going to adjust their instruction based on the physical layout of their classrooms. When teachers come back, their classrooms look very different than they did when they left. And they have to learn to adapt to the fact that they're going to be less mobile, that there's going to be less physical breakout sessions within a classroom. So it takes time to think about how you're going to present your learning. A large portion of it, Peter, is set up to be asynchronous, on-demand, and we developed a very comprehensive on-demand professional learning catalog that we are embedding in what we have, what is our professional learning Google Classroom. So all teachers will have must-do assignments, and then they will have enrichment assignments, knowing that many of our teachers are actually quite adept at the digital tools that we have used in the past. And so we want to be able to work with all levels of teachers. And the purpose behind the on-demand catalog is to give teachers the flexibility to go at the learning at their own pace. So if they need to do it twice, they can do it twice. But we always are asking for a tangible outcome that helps build their Google Classroom. And this goes back to and speaks to a question that was asked earlier. It helps them build their Google Classroom. Should they need to pivot at a moment's notice to remote learning? There's no scrambling to get their digital tools ready. We are giving them specific assignments to front-load that work. So everything that's asked of them is a meaningful task. It's not just so that we can make sure that we can gauge compliance and participation. I'd be happy to share out the plan.
Right, this is, let me just say this, and then I'm going to yield the floor, because my time on this one is done. Mark, we have amazing teachers, okay? And candidly, I've said this, so I'll say it out loud. I think actually by decisions that were made in the spring, we did not give them the best support that they could have had to do what they do so incredibly well in Greenwich. We kind of tied their hands. And when we asked the question of why were we not allowing them to conduct a classroom? Why were we not allowing them to do this? The answer we got back, and this is before you were in the job, was infrastructure problems, not the right tools, not recommended by the state, and so many teachers were not trained in this technology. Those were the answers that were given to the board, okay? So I don't, you know, I don't want to go back over that. What I do want to do, though, is I am not confident, based upon what happened in the spring and the answers that I've heard over the last month, I am not confident that every single teacher, 900 of them, are going to get, like on a district-wide professional learning day, a standardized program of training on these tools, how to use them, how to fit them into your pedagogy that you may be doing in a classroom. That part has to be flexible enough because different teachers are going to do different things. But the tools and the tools that they use are standardized. And we need to be sure, I think, because I said this back on the 13th, we need, one criteria has to be of any plan, we need to be able to shut on a moment's notice. It could happen on day two. We need to be able to shut on a moment's, that means every single teacher has to flip over to conferencing, which is full interaction with the teacher, as Ms. Jackalef and others had shown in that video. But I want to be sure teachers have been fully supported and fully trained. And I, I'm very, very concerned about that, because if you're going to ask teachers to flip on a dime, we need to have given them all the tools so that they can do that. I think it sounds like you've thought about that, but I think from the district has to be, this is the mandatory program that every school has to do, whether that's done in a building, whether you bring them all together, whether you put all them on a live stream. And I'm just, I'm trying to get very specific because the ambiguity in these things is, doesn't give me comfort that this is the right plan. So that's what's on my mind. Don't try to answer it now. If that's what you're doing, great. I just want to be sure we have a standard program for all 900-plus teachers in the district, and by the way, all the other staff, too. Enough said.
Okay, Ms. Hirsch.
Well, I was going to, I sort of lost my train of thought. I had one quick comment, and I know I had brought this up earlier, I had reached out to Michael Ting, and I just sort of, in case parents were concerned, I just wanted to make sure that Dr. Jones, I don't know if Mr. Ting is on tonight. I know when we changed over to the new revised Google platform, that some of the students were noting that some of the work that they had in their Google Docs wasn't migrated over, and some seemed to have lost materials from some of their linked apps like Quizlet. I know that that issue's already been brought up, and all the information is actually archived, so the students will be able to sort of access those. I don't know if, Tony, if you have any more information on that? Just in case there's any students or parents worried about that stuff going forward.
Yeah, I'll let Mike go ahead and answer that since it's technology.
Hi, it's Michael Ting. I want to assure everyone that none of the student data was lost. If some of the student data didn't transition over during the migration, you should contact the support staff, and we can give you temporary access to the old data so that you can copy it over.
Thank you. I just know that, you know, I had a lot of people asking about that because there was a, which is why we do all of our things in advance, and why I know that there's a lot of professional development for our educators on using all the new upgraded Google tools and all sorts of other things that are happening so robustly in the district. I did want to ask a specific question, you know, I know that, or comment at least. Tony, I know that you mentioned multiple times that, you know, we may be starting the year off just making sure our educators and our students are comfortable with in-school learning, and then going forward and making revisions as things go. So I just wanted to sort of comment on that. I know a lot of these operational details are things that are being worked through daily by all of our administration and staff, and making sure that our teachers have exactly what they need to start the school year, whether it's remote learning school or in-school learning properly. And I know that you had noted sort of that going forward, that there may be some opportunity for teachers once they become comfortable, if they wanted to record lessons for students, for students who may need to watch those videos again to get understanding from them. So I know that you've noted that in quite a few meetings, so I did want to point that out. But I did want us to sort of say thank you for just making sure that our staff is getting the support that they need, at least prior to school starting, and I know that they'll be getting a lot of that going forward as well. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Kowalski.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Bernstein. So I have, I think, an easier question and then a hard question, so I'll start with the easier question. I know CAC is meeting this evening. I think their meeting started 30 minutes before our meeting. I will admit, I have paid full attention to this meeting and not Googled to figure out what in fact their decision is ultimately going to be. But I understand that there are some districts, obviously that's guidance, and there are some districts still within the state of Connecticut that have decided that irrespective of the guidance that comes from CAC, they are making their own independent decisions, some of which have already decided they are postponing fall sports and moving them to the spring. I haven't heard what our intention is, whether, one, we're planning to follow CAC's guidance on sports, or if we are going to make an independent decision for the town of Greenwich.
I think really for us, it is, don't put the cart before the horse, is that mentality. Once CAC meets, it'll be a little bit more clear, because some of the things they've talked about were switching where some of the seasons would fall during the year. So it's not actually canceling a sport, it was changing the order of the sports. So once we kind of know a little bit more about what they're saying, the two sports that they had mentioned over the last two weeks, and again, I'm not on all the CIAC meetings that like our athletic director would be, so they could have even changed in the last week, but it was mainly swimming and football where they were having some large discussions. And once they weigh in on that tonight, we'll see what that guidance is. I do know, you know, in Fairfield County, that everyone is looking at how can we keep our young people active and still engaged in a healthy way. And so once we have that decision, we will be able to determine how to move forward. But if there are no teams to play, because the colleagues that I know that have made the decision, it's actually been to not have sports, so because of the health of the city.
We could put together a students versus teachers.
Yeah.
Just kidding. So, and here's my tougher question, and I think, Mary, this is going to need your input on it. But I've sat on, over the last couple of weeks, several calls regarding special education and how that's going to be offered to students, both in a physical school setting, and there were lots of questions directed towards that. What I'm lacking answers for is how will it be provided in a remote setting?
Students who are in remote will do this similar procedures to what we did in the spring, and that will look at the IEP, that we call the pre-pandemic IEP, as our foundation document. So as much as we can, we will try and honor the services that were described in the pre-pandemic IEP. Some of that will change because for some of the students, their goals and objectives were kind of specific to being in an in-school setting. So you may see things like sharing in a group, or eating in the cafeteria, or, you know, some of those things that don't make any sense if you're home. So the, once we just have finished, and that's actually what I'm looking at now, are the students who are going to be in remote, we need to go back into the IEPs as we did in the spring, identify those goals and objectives that really need to be put on hold while students are in a remote learning situation, and then relook at the services to make sure that we can provide the services for the goals and objectives that we actually will be working on in the remote setting. We have just started talking about making sure that we have some availability to provide speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and counseling live if those remote students want to get those services live. We're clearing out the Millbank Building, which is where the evaluation teams are, so we'll have some opportunity for students to get some face-to-face related services without going into a building as a novel person. We've also started to look at, is there a way of identifying a room near a door in an elementary school where we might be able to have remote students come in if they choose to, to have limited access into the building, to go into a contiguous space to a door, get primarily related services, speech and counseling, face-to-face with somebody that they're familiar with. So those two things are things we're looking at right now, but we wanted to wait to see which of our related service staff are interested in doing remote and which are not. If we don't have enough remote staff, we may want to look at trying to provide that very narrow exposure kind of service in terms of the related services.
Yeah, I'm really worried about the staffing component on this, right? Because, one, what I think I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there may be dedicated, there may be dedicated sped teachers just for remote, and then dedicated teachers. We were already at a deficit with respect to, I think, teachers for sped in general for in-class purposes. I'm just, my concern is the leveraging of our special ed teachers across the district versus to remote learning and in-person learning, I think is going to be a complete challenge. And I guess I'd like to understand a little bit the numbers between the number of unique learners that we have remote versus in-person, and the teacher ratio, and how we're going to provide adequate services. I mean, one thing that I, I hear is we're going to have to modify things, and there, I appreciate that there may need to be certain modifications for things that require, you know, physical, hands-on components to their, to that student-specific plan. But there are other students that are mandated by the state to have a certain number of hours. I don't know how we're getting around that number of hours. And maybe this is a question for Dr. Jones, which is, I'm not seeing anything of the guidance that's coming down from the state to suggest that there's a waiver or some kind of dispensation you get for our special ed students regarding the number of hours of therapy and other special education that they are mandated by law to get. So how do we address those issues? Because my concern is, as a board member and also as a, you know, Greenwich resident, are we subjecting ourselves to potential legal liability? by not providing our students the adequate number of hours that they are mandated to get by the state irrespective of the fact that we're in a COVID world?
Well, the first thing is that what we are required to do and which has not been waived is the provision of a free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. That, that responsibility of the district has not been waived. What the state has given us some dispensation to do is to look at some flexibility in the way we provide those services. And I think the example I used at a prior meeting was if a student had three times 30 on their IEP, maybe it makes sense to go to two times 45. It's still an hour and a half. We may also say to a parent, we want to go two times 40 because we need five minutes after the session to clean the desk, disinfect, and put on new PPEs. So we're not changing the free and appropriate public education, but we may need some flexibility in how it's provided. We had this conversation today at our meeting with the focus group, with the special ed focus group, which is what we will do is to look at the schedule, look at the staff, and make recommendations for how the students' pre-pandemic IEP will be implemented, either in remote learning or in face-to-face learning. And it really is an elementary issue because middle and high school, they're following their regular schedule. So at the elementary level, it's really where we're gonna see that issue come up. What this team will then do is to say to a parent, here's our recommendation. And it's a conversation between the school and the parent about how we see us implementing that pre-pandemic IEP with the flexibility we need to make it work in the, in the current situation.
And how are we addressing the needs for, let's say, a child who's going through the, the initial testing phase to determine whether or not they are, they qualify for services, right? And it's remote versus, in a remote setting. It's gotta be a challenge in order to identify that. How are we going about doing that testing to make sure that there's an early intervention and the appropriately timing of intervention to address those students' needs?
Kind of two different topics. Once the, the evaluation process, we worked really hard this summer to clean, clean up all of the evaluations that were left hanging. So any student who had either had the evaluation started but not completed or for whom we had obtained permission to evaluate but couldn't get started, almost all of those have been completed this summer by working through summer evaluations. Now, as we come into the school year, we'll start having meetings for students whose teams may have been ready to make the recommendation for evaluation but didn't get the chance because we went out into remote learning. What we're asking schools and parents to do is to just give us a little time, let the kids get back into school, let them get back into routines, and then if you were going to make the recommendation and you still think that recommendation needs to be made, to go to a PPT to make the recommendation for evaluation. As long as we are still permitted face-to-face instruction, we'll keep moving forward with our initial evaluations using the evaluation team. That will have to stop should the conditions warrant that we can no longer do face-to-face, which is what happened to us in the spring.
Okay, Ms. Stone.
Hi, good evening. First of all, thank you for that presentation a couple hours ago. That was very helpful. I also have to say, I had the pleasure of listening to a lot of the town halls this week. And I know we're not obliged to do that as board members, but I did it as a parent. And I found it really helpful, especially on the middle school front. So I hope those were recorded. I encourage people to go back and listen to those. Also, reading the frequently asked questions document, I have also found incredibly helpful. And I've had friends who text me throughout these meetings and email me and they've said, you know, I have definitely answered some of the same questions, but I think that it's really helpful to just keep all of us communicating because, you know, there's new information every day and with the virus, with our schools, with life. And so I just think that it's great. You have eight people here that are willing to go out and like, you know, pound the pavement and talk about what's happening. We're all a part of this community. So I just want to encourage us all to keep these conversations going as my dog decides to bark in the background, just like Karen Kowalski is. One of the other things I wanted to note is that these numbers, to me, I'm sort of focusing on the fact that 82 and a half percent of our students and families are telling us they want to go back to school. And that they, you know, and I know that, again, things can change at any point, but our state authorities and Dr. Fauci are telling us it can be, can be done. Again, every day could be different, but this is obviously what the majority of our community is looking for. And I just think it's great that we're continuing to offer options because no student should feel compelled to go to school. I think I, I made this very clear in my meeting a couple weeks ago. Having options is always great. But for those who want to, we have, I know looking at the video and seeing how you're socially distancing within the classroom and the hallways, I even feel more comfortable as a parent. So that's great. I think we can keep sort of providing more communication like that, both on the remote school as well as on sort of the in-person schooling. Everyone, you know, everyone just wants certainty and obviously we can't provide that. So instead, we can just keep providing information to get people as comfortable as possible. So with that, I will ask one question. We're going to keep surveying and I think that's important. I know that, are these, sorry, two questions. Would you say these numbers, this, you know, the, whatever, the 694 of the 398, 3988, the 411 of the 2056, the whatever, are they locked down? Are we sort of, I mean, the survey ended, but I guess there's always the option that things can change, but we're gonna start cohorting now. That's my first question. Is that right?
We are, they, they really need to be locked down because we have to match teachers with students and it's very difficult if parents start going back and forth on a daily basis. And one of the things we will be putting out as part of our remote school information is the date at which, okay, this is when we're going to be looking at, if you want to make a change, so that we're, we're offering those periodically so we can manage it. And we will be putting that information out. So we are hoping that the families who have made this decision, because they've had twice, you know, two different decisions. And as a matter of fact, last weekend, over the weekend, I know we had 50 families that had chosen remote in elementary and they chose to come back face-to-face and said, will you please change mine? Yeah, so I think people feel pretty solid about, you know, about where they are and the choice that they've made.
So then my second question is, we had a lot of parents who were good enough to say, you know, I'll opt out of busing and I'll, and I'll drive. I know, I think I heard it on one of the town hall meetings or maybe I heard it here. But is there, I understand, is there a survey coming out on that so that you can lock that down as well?
Yes, I can't remember if it goes tomorrow with my parent note or the announcement to watch for it on Monday, but it'll be Friday or Monday.
Okay, that's important. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you so much.
So this is Peter Bernstein. I just want to follow up on something that Kathleen asked. I know there are probably people who have not opted out yet, Tony, that might still wish to do so. What is the best way for them to communicate that to you and how are you gonna handle that?
We will put something in the newsletter tomorrow on that. That could be helpful for the, the correct address to use because they've been using the opt-out form, so we will have to have that process. I'll put that in the newsletter tomorrow for the family note and clarify that.
Great. Ms. Olson.
Thanks, Peter. I have a shared concern. I don't think anybody's asked us at the board level, but we've gotten a countless number of emails from concerned teachers and staff and parents, mostly parents. But, so the minimum guidance from the CDC is six feet of social distancing and restaurants, doctors' offices, stores, et cetera, indoors, six feet social distance. And the majority of the schools in Fairfield County are going hybrid for space purposes. You've said before, for space purposes, and are putting their students and, and so that their students and staff can be more properly, adequately socially distanced. And we're putting our students and staff at a mere three feet in certain instances. So my question is, what medical advice are you relying on in choosing not to go hybrid?
Yeah, so what, when you look around Fairfield County, what you'll find is that they're using the language from the state, which is again, from the state, the Connecticut Department of Health and the guidance. And that is six feet, it is three to six feet, and six feet is where feasible. So, and there are a lot of districts around us that are not all going six feet. I was just checking today on kind of what's happening in the region. And, you know, you do have, like districts like New Canaan are only hybrid for the first, I believe it's the first eight days, and then K4 is fully back in. The next week, they're bringing the next level, the next week, the next level. Everybody's doing something a little bit different. I also know that, you know, one of the districts that's going K8 hybrid is simply because they don't have the space. They are running, you know, class sizes, the average is 26. So if your average is 26, that means you have some classes with 30. We're not doing that. We set our class average at 20 before we even put our remote school option in. So we have really tried to make sure we've spread students out in our buildings so that we can actually feel like we have a good social distance. But every, every district is doing something slightly different. And some of them, like I say, are just doing remote for a period of time. And then some of them feel like they even have their high school, you know, in full remote and they don't have any, any idea when they will even return to perhaps hybrid. It's actually in the guidance document from the state. That's, that's the guy, the guidance the state gave us is three.
It's three to six feet. I'm just saying if we could do 10 to 12 classes of 10 to 12 and do hybrid, I was just curious why you opted not to do, go that route or explore that option, I guess I should say.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's for, you know, a couple of different reasons. Again, I think we're in a different scenario in that our class sizes are small. We're not in the same situation as other districts. I also, I have concerns about, you know, bringing K5 back and not, given the infection rate where it is and all of the experts that tell us that it's safe. You know, I actually this week met our head of nursing, walked her over to, actually the classroom you saw in the picture that had the clear dividers on it to make sure that she was physically able to see, this is what it looks like. Here's the distance, you know, are we, are we safe? And I think that going to an AMPM, for instance, for elementary, they miss out on a lot, they miss out on a lot of instruction because if a teacher is hybrid in the morning with children, they can't be online with the other group of children in the afternoon. So that's part of it. I think that's a challenge. Middle school could look more like high school, but again, the number of remote students that we have opting out, for those parents who want face-to-face, our class sizes are small and you look at, I know Eastern is the building I've probably heard the most from, but there, you know, the number of students that are going to be in that building where people tend to think 900, it's actually just over 700. You know, you're down 200 children based on the natural enrollment number because they were about 40 less because a larger eighth grade moved out, a smaller sixth grade came in. Then on top of that, you have their opt-out numbers that I showed. So we feel like it's manageable and it's, you know, we can keep our staff safe. We've got our PPE equipment. We've done all of the right things to invest in safety and security. And we just, we, we feel like it's the right thing to do instructionally. And again, we're, we're being very thoughtful of our teachers and making sure they're, that, that's one of the reasons. It's, we've made some hard decisions. And, you know, when you go back to the very beginning of this conversation, the activities, things that are offered, we've modified our schedules so that kids aren't, you know, just having a passing time, you know, where they're all out in the hall together. But we've done that because we feel like we're trying to really make sure the academic aspect is there because there is a concern that at some point in the year, everybody is going to be full remote when flu season hits. So we want to take every opportunity to have as much normalcy as possible for our children and also for the mental health aspect.
It just feels as a, I didn't mean to cut you off. Did you have more?
No, no, go ahead.
No, it just feels that the, the plan as it stands now, because I'm all for choice, but because there is no middle ground, I feel like we're, we're having parents and families make this really difficult choice between putting their health and safety at risk or putting their education at risk with the plan as it stands. Specifically more for secondary ed. So I just, I feel like a lot of parents have to make and, and families and students have to make a really difficult choice between health and education and probably feel the strain that they don't need to feel right now.
Yeah, it is, I will say it's difficult to meet the needs of every single family and some families, you know, not being in school was so incredibly difficult, which I think for a lot of families that had their children at home, you know, full-time, remote. And it was difficult to keep their job. It was difficult to, to manage. And from a, from a mental health standpoint, you know, we're also concerned about things like the DCF referrals, which I know you'd be familiar with, Megan, where, you know, we make referrals if we feel like children are going hungry or there's something that's not okay. Those are significantly down across Connecticut and we know a lot of the issues still exist. So we, I think in Greenwich, we did a good job looking at things like food security, making sure that everybody, you know, was taken care of there, trying to connect counselors with, with students. But I'm also concerned even from the suicide rate and how that's increasing in young people across the United States during COVID. And that mental health aspect of getting kids back to school, I think, is equally as important as the academics. So we have tried to prepare our buildings to be able to come back and we've, and we have taken some different strategies than some of the districts. And those clear dividers, there probably aren't a lot of districts where every elementary student has access to that. But we felt like it was important so that when they're fiddling with their mask, you know, it's an extra layer of protection. So we really, we worked hard to be prepared.
No, and I hear you on SCL and mental health. I just, I, I guess my, my concern there is if we all go back prematurely, there's a lot, there's gonna be a lot more trauma and SCL mental health issues to deal with if, if it goes the wrong direction. And I'm just being realistic and watching the news and following trends when I say that, so.
Let me, let me say this. So I, you know, because I do sit in a challenging seat. Oh, I'm sorry, you cut out. I, I couldn't still hear you.
Me, I'm done.
Oh, I was gonna say, one of the comments I made on one of the webinars this week, and it really came after a conversation I'd been in just at the state level, was, you know, we have some amazing health professionals that are guiding us in COVID, epidemiologists at the state level, you know, this is what they do for a living. And if we're going to listen to those specialists when they tell us to close schools, why are we ignoring their advice when they're telling us to open? And, you know, that's, that for me was, it's a challenging thing to think about because you have the pediatrician's group, association is saying, we need to get children back in school because they're seeing what's happening to children who are showing up in their offices. But then I even go back to like Dr. Fauci and our, our state epidemiologists and they're saying, at this percentage rate, we should be getting children back in schools. So I also feel like I, it's my duty as a school superintendent to also listen and, and be thoughtful from the advice of those who have expertise that I don't. And unfortunately, this, you know, this decision is much more difficult than a snow day and snow days, I always thought were like the worst thing. But this is, decision-making is very different than a snow day.
All right, Ms. Hirsch.
My comments probably go back to quite a few. I just wanted to note, Mary, I know every time we talk about special education and how we're gonna be delivering that going forward, you keep talking about pre-pand, that, pre-pandemic IEPs. An IEP is an IEP whether it was done prior to COVID or currently, and we still need to support the students with what is in their IEPs no matter when they were done. And I'm just curious to make sure that we're kind of looking through all of those IEPs because there may be students who got certain services that may be slightly translated or different if they're going to the remote option. Do we know how many of our students with IEPs or 504s have opted for remote learning?
If I might say, Mary, we probably want to cross-reference that with Jen before because we have, we did not pull that today, just to double-check the numbers before we would say that publicly. Because we worked on these all day. So that's one statistic I did not get from her.
Mary, you're on mute.
What I will tell you is, the guidance we have from the state is that we are not to change IEPs to reflect differences in services as a result of scheduling or whatever we have to do to accommodate the social distancing that comes from the pandemic crisis. So that if you had an IP before that, that is your IEP. And if we need to make adjustments, we should be flexible in making the adjustments to that IEP. But if in fact the vaccine comes out tomorrow and we all go back to school the way it was, those IEPs go right back into effect. And that's the direction from the state, is that we don't change IEPs, the IEP, to reflect any changes we need to make given the hybridization of instruction or remote learning. We are, however, going to be creating something we're calling service plans. Different districts have different names for them, which is, we've taken your IEP and here are the modifications we're making, given the fact that you are either in hybrid, chosen remote, or whatever's going on. But the IEP, because the child that we knew prior to leaving in March, the team got the team got together and said, and this is an example, this is a student who needs speech two times 30. That's what we decided they need. Now, if because they're in remote learning or something happens, it needs to go to one times 45, one times 15.
Mary, I don't want to interrupt you, but I, you're exactly saying what I'm saying. You keep referring to them as pre-pandemic IEPs. And IEP is an IEP no matter when it was given and those services still need to be given to students. I'm just asking that you not consistently call them pre-pandemic. Because what's in them is what needs to be, the services that are need to be given to our students. So I just didn't know, again, if you're noting that there's going to be some service plans to maybe make adjustments if need be, that's fine. But I just, I just know the term pre-pandemic IEP is, is a little off base. I don't know. Because as you just said, an IEP is an IEP. We can't, we're not changing them and what a student receives based on COVID. So that's why I'm just saying, I appreciate it.
But we just want to be clear when we're talking to parents about what the services that we recommended before the closure and then any adjustments we make. So that's just the term we're using. I understand it sounds a little harsh, but it just, if I can say the pre-March IEP, because some students are getting services that look a little different now than is on the IEP that would go back into effect should we go back into school.
Okay, well, you just said two different things. So I'm, I'm hoping that maybe you can clarify what's in the IEP, no matter when it was done. If it was last year, if it was in March, if it was in April, is, are the services our students are getting? And we are not changing them. And then you just said something about students having services that were changed due to the pandemic. So either they're getting their services that were in the IEP, because that is what's required, or they're not. And we are changing things based on COVID. So I just, you've said two different things in one sentence. Maybe I'm misunderstanding that. But it's, it makes it very confusing.
We have flexibility from the state to make changes to the, to the services that were offered in the, whatever we're calling that IEP, given the structural changes we have to make in response to social distancing and remote learning. And again, the IEP, the March IEP, the pre-pandemic IEP, the IEP says something. If you look at a student's schedule tomorrow, in two weeks, if they're in remote learning, it may not look exactly the same as the IEP. We've had to make some adjustments to it because, for example, the student is not in a group working on social skills anymore. They're in remote learning. So things will look different. The IEP does not change. There is a service plan or whatever you want to call it, stakeholders, a learning plan that demonstrates what changes needed to be made to accommodate the current circumstances.
Okay, well, it, it's just, I know that the way you're, the way you're describing it is, is to me sounds two different ways. And I think that that just, we just need some more clarity on that. Just whatever we do, it's an FAQ document or something. Basically, either everyone's getting a change based on how things are, the delivery of their services, or their services are happening, no matter what it may be. That's, it's just confusing. That's all. And I did want to just sort of ask a quick question. I don't know if Mr. Mayo is still on this evening. But you know, I, I know I asked this before, you know, we have a lot of students at the high school. Last year when we closed for remote learning, those students were, were in the school, had an opportunity to have a lot of those experiences all through the fall and the early part of the spring that were really critical to parts of their education that make that experience such a full and rich experience and why our high school is consistently one of the best. And I just wanted to sort of make sure that we are figuring out ways for our students incoming from freshmen who've, are just entering our school to be participatory as, as a full class size, sophomores, juniors, and especially our seniors, because they're going to be losing a lot of opportunity. And I know it's, I'm not even, you know, some of it is the social aspect. And that is a huge part of their social emotional learning, a huge part of the level of anxiety and support that our students get going to school. So I just want to make sure that we are going to be considerate of ensuring that we create opportunities for our students to be doing things as a class, to get to know their other classmates, and to still have some of those social experiences that make up what part of Greenwich High School is. Okay, Ralph's still on.
And he's actually, he would need to be elevated to panelist. He's on the attendee side right now.
Oh, okay. Well, he can address it in, in some other way. I just, I just wanted to put that out there because I hear a lot of concern regards to the fact that, you know, the student population is going to be split in half. I know this evening you even noted, Dr. Jones, that we may not even be able to move out of the hybrid model for the high school at some point during the year. You know, that, that is really causing a lot of stress and anxiety for a lot of our students who may never get to see some of their friends again in school. So I just know that that's a big concern. It's, it's, you know, we are focused, so focused on the social emotional aspects. And we're supposed to be, as we're supposed to be. So I want to make sure that we're building in some of those opportunities to be able to do class-wide activities and things that students can have interaction with other classmates that may be in the opposite cohort.
Yeah, and I don't know if he's been elevated, but he did answer that on Monday night at the high school town hall. And absolutely, and they're working to, they know how important that is. And that they're working to do that. And especially having some virtual online events as well right now for students.
Thanks. And I, I'm sure there will be more information coming forward. So I appreciate that.
All right, Ms. Kowalski.
Sure. So I had one clarifying question, Dr. Jones, which is, and I may have just mistakenly heard this. So my understanding is for irrespective of what school you're in, whether it's the remote school versus the in-person school, you can change it anytime. Is that correct? Because I thought I heard maybe 20 minutes ago or so that there were certain change dates. And I don't understand what change dates means versus the option of you can free to go back and forth whenever you like. You just have to give us time in order to accommodate that.
Yeah, it, they goes back to that whole 14-day thing. So when you have 15 students, 1,500 students who have opted out, you don't know what you don't know. And how many are going to want to opt back in? And we're trying to look at those, for instance, like on a Monday, where we start problem solving those. A lot of those students by the very next day, especially if they're going remote, that's an easier switch in some regards, especially in secondary. If they want to come back in, let's say we had 300 families over a Saturday, Sunday say, hey, it's going great. You know, we all want to go back. Well, we need time to make sure that we can get all the desks in that were set up for the students. So, you know, do we may need to make lunch adjustments because we had the lunchroom set for X amount of students? And now we need to bring in another table because so many are coming back. But yes, throughout the year, there is flexibility and that is from the state.
Okay, so just, just, just to make sure we're clear. So it's, it's not that they have to change on, they can announce a change on a particular, by a particular date or when certain dates come up. They can actually decide irrespective of the day of the calendar. It just need, they, they as the family need to give the administration the, a two-week time period. You know, at least a two-week time period. It may be last, right? You may be able to do it sooner. But you need to give you time to get them integrated into whichever school they're moving into.
That's correct. And, you know, we'll, we will be giving some guidance, like can you make those requests on Mondays, for instance, not just Monday through the weekend, seven days a week, all hours of the day? Because that helps us manage how many students that week we want to try to get back in. So we're hoping parents will really work with us on that. Because it would be difficult if a lot of parents on a Saturday, all of a sudden we get submissions and they're wanting to come, you know, back on Monday and Tuesday. So it's just trying to help us manage so we can have a good system and be a good partnership with the families to make it fluid. Again, we don't know what to expect. You know, those who have chosen remote may stay that way for, you know, till, till winter break or we just don't know. But we're going to work with our families, make it as painless as possible for everybody.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Scher.
I, I had a couple. I don't even know what to do with that 14 days again. I thought we killed that one off, but it appears it kind of reappeared. I have other more important questions. Tony, you said a while ago, guidance from the state regarding arts and that you would be following that. Is that correct?
We have a guidance document from the state that actually just outlines, you know, information for us about the arts. What we are, where we're offering general music is well within those guidelines.
Okay, so because I had heard, and I thought in the conversation, I had heard, and maybe you could help clarify this. There had been some suggestion that certain music programs would be either for part of the year or a full year suspended. Is that wrong?
No, that's not wrong. We, we've said that all along in K8. We are not offering onsite band and chorus due to the safety aspects of those two, of those two classes, that they're still having music. And we hope to have the virtual aspect so students can still, you know, just like they did in the spring. They still practice their instruments. They got feedback. We haven't, because our staff haven't returned, we don't have, we don't know how many of our music teachers are going to want to do that as like a stifened activity, just like we did with virtual athletics. But our music department did a fabulous job when they were online last year. So we're hoping to have that for our students. But yes, for safety reasons, those are two classes that are not operating K8.
Okay, I don't understand that because addendum seven from the state, August 14th, is exactly opposite from what you just said. So I don't understand what, what we're following. We said we're following the state's guidance. This is from the Connecticut State Department of Education, reopening considerations for Connecticut K-12 music programs. It's very clear and it tells them what to do. It says you operate them and it tells you exactly how to operate them. So I don't know what you're referring to.
Yeah, well, I, I know it's really difficult when it's, because it is very complex to understand how the buildings are functioning in COVID. So part of that is, you're right, you do have to be able to implement in a safe way. So if you have a building that doesn't have the space for instrument cases, you no longer have those additional spaces available because of social distancing. Maybe perhaps one of the rooms is being used for cafeteria. We don't have, we, we do not believe that we can social distance to the point that it will be safe for students to basically have either a slit in their mask or something of that nature to blow on a horn. We also, given our building and how we're setting up, and we are being very careful, we look at the developmental age of the young people and what we have to do. So that's where we are. We're, we're looking at our.
I'm reading this. I'm sorry. I've been in this district longer than you have. And to be blunt, I'm reading through this knowing our individual school buildings. I'm not talking about elementary. I'm talking about middle schools and our high school. You're probably aware, particularly at the high school as an example. We spent $47 million building a complex that has an amazing amount of space to be able to meet all of these guidelines. So I, I can kind of understand what you may be saying at elementary schools because elementary schools are space constrained particularly. But following this guidance, we're able to implement this at middle schools and high school. And I don't understand why we would not follow this guidance, figure out how to do it. It's very clear about the distance between children, how they're to be taught. Facial coverings are going to be worn at all times. I would hate to see, and by the way, you know, it's a part of our policy that these programs are delivered. So we would need to have a vote of the board to suspend them. Which I, you know, that's a change to policy. So I'm a little, I think you need to go back and look at this because I don't think, you know, at the middle school and at the high school. I would agree with you at the elementary school. You know, because there are no, in a lot of cases, no dedicated music rooms. There are no, you know, auditoriums. A lot of elementary schools don't have auditoriums. They're gyms. But at the middle schools, we have dedicated spaces. And I, I think we need to follow this guidance.
Yeah, I respect that. And obviously, I interpret the guidance differently. And I interpret it differently in the safety for the children and the staff in our buildings, the movement around the buildings, the cohorting that must exist also in middle school, having space for the instrument cases, which are high touch. There are a lot of concerns and we'll continue to watch this, which I have said throughout the year. But making health and safety decisions comes first. And I'm hoping again that we will have that virtual aspect, which, you know, we can make.
Are you suggesting that the state's guidelines are not taken into account health and safety?
I think I've already spoken to that. So I think we should probably move on.
So Tony, tell me specifically what you're, what decision you're making. You're deciding to suspend coral and wind across middle school and high school for the year?
I'm, are you, are you asking me that, that question or because we've been.
I'm trying to understand what you're, I'm trying to understand what you're doing.
Yeah, we have a schedule that supports actually cohorting, social distancing, which means you can't have people all over the building moving around in that way. In order to have a schedule that keeps our children and our staff safe, those are two electives. Because we have changed how we're offering our electives so that the elective teachers are grouped in a way. So the teachers are still teaching. They're teaching a general music. And again, we will be working to try to see if we can extend that virtually. But again, this is not new. We've been.
I'm sorry, Tony. I'm asking a really specific question. Like I, I said, are you suspending? Let me just take it in two parts. Are you trying, making a decision to suspend coral and wind programs at the middle school? And if you are, for how long?
Our schedule and the way that it's built to keep children and staff safe. Yes, we are putting that on hold right now because we do not feel that we can implement the.
How long will it be on hold? How long will it be on hold?
I think it depends on what, what depends on what happens with COVID. And again, I have full faith that we can try to implement. And I know the high school has a great plan where when they're in face-to-face, they're doing theory. And then on their other days, they're actually practicing their instruments and uploading. Our music department was fabulous last year. I have no doubt that we're going to find a way to make this happen through virtual where kids can come together. But yes, face-to-face, it does not meet with our schedule right now because we cannot keep our children and staff safe by implementing those two classes.
Okay, so at the middle school, you're suspending it. Are you also suspending it at the high school?
At the high school, they actually have their orchestra. But they are teaching differently when the children are face-to-face with them and doing more of the theory and doing the instrumental practice when they are Wednesday, all live together. And then Thursday, Friday, or whichever cohort you're on. So it will look differently at high school as well, but they work really hard.
I didn't, I didn't ask about orchestra. I was sorry. I should have been more specific. I was asking about coral and wind.
At the high school, yeah, that's how I just described it.
So I'm sorry, can you just say one more time? Coral and wind at the high school will be suspended until future?
No, I've never said the word suspended. I don't use that word.
Okay, then help me understand it. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get a really clear answer.
So if their schedule says chorus, then when the students are, because they're on a hybrid, when they're there Monday or Tuesday, the teacher is actually doing more of the theory work. Because if we don't have the space to really spread kids out in a way that we feel like it's safe, we are using that health and safety guidance, then when the students are home on their Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, if they're a Monday, Tuesday, face-to-face student, that's when they're actually doing their instrumental, their singing. And again, I have full faith in, in our educators to implement this really well to try to see if we can bring kids back and staff back in a, in a really safe way.
So they have the discretion, so let me just say that. They have the discretion to organize their classroom presumably consistent with these guidelines? And if they think they can fulfill them, they're permitted to run the class that way?
No, we're not running those two classes right now for health and safety reasons. And we will continue to reevaluate that.
Okay, and. Okay, and, okay, and do you know, do you happen to know what other districts are doing with these two programs?
I think it's, it's different district by district. Some of the districts don't have the robust programming that we have at all. So we are going by what we have, what we know our buildings, how we're moving children around. And again, you know, when you look at middle school, you know, we're, we're bringing our middle school students back. We're using lots of different space in our building than other districts are utilizing. And I think you have to, you know, every district is different and every, every programming piece is different.
I'll move on. Tony, I wanted to clarify this. When you presented to us at your first meeting in June, in July rather, on the subject, you told us that you would be using the CDC standard for, that they recommend for opening schools. And are we still doing that? I hear you talk about state standards. I don't hear you talking about CDC standards anymore. So I'm very confused. Hello, am I still here?
Oh, sorry, my laptop was dying. So I've been on too many of these meetings today.
Yeah, I know. I've had that happen to me many a time.
And so I had to move. Now, we're using, we're using all of that guidance. But what the state does, when the CDC first came out with their guidance, it was very, very restrictive, which is the guidance that we were under in the summer. And then the state took that guidance from the CDC and they gave us guidance for our schools in Connecticut. And that is what we use. And we've been, we have been told it's three to six feet, six feet when feasible. And that's exactly what we're implementing.
So, okay, because the CDC guidance is six feet, but I just want to be clear so that we're just clear. We're not following that guidance. You're following different guidance. Who's that guidance from? Is it from the Connecticut State Department of Education? Or is it from the Connecticut State Department of Health?
Actually, they work together. The Department of Health.
Where'd you get the guidance?
As feasible, that's in the actual state plan where it says six feet and the feasible and the three to six feet is where they have told us that it is safe. And that's in the state plan guidance that they put out. Goodness, probably, I want to say it's like two months ago now, but it's been out for a while.
And that's from the Connecticut State Department of Education, I guess?
Yes, Karen, you might remember the exact name, the advanced slur. I can't think of the exact name at the moment.
The adapt advance, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I think that's where it is.
Oh, yeah, that's on, that's on the state, the CSC. Okay, so I'll read through. You still were clear, we're not following, that's okay. You're following the Connecticut State Department of Education guidance. We're not following the CDC guidance. That's okay. That's the answer to the question. The next question, the next question.
I was just going to say this Connecticut State Department of Education and the Department, Connecticut Department of Health utilize those CDC guidelines in order to create our, the plan that they had asked school districts to follow.
Karen.
Just, you know.
Or Ms. Hirsch, if everybody wants to use their formal name. The CDC guidance on opening schools says six feet. So that's okay.
But I think that was a recommendation, but either, and by the way, I was being formal because we have two Peters and you could be formal because there's two parents.
So the other question I had, Tony, is can you explain the protocol? When a student is suspected of having COVID and then when a student is discovered having COVID? Just remind me again how that's going to handle. I think the last time you told us is you were still developing the guidance, you had a decision tree chart and what have you, but that it was going to be finalized. I presume by now it's finalized. So can you just walk through that with highlights?
And I can, but I think you're giving me too much credit. It's not, it's not me that actually creates that. That's actually Department of Health and our local Department of Health. And they actually have a document that they, that they do utilize. So that if they're showing symptoms, what type of symptoms, are they a student, you know, and it can say yes or no. If it's a student that normally has asthma and that symptom looks like it could also simulate a COVID symptom. That's where they're trying to go through and make sure that they understand what the symptoms are and what is normal and not normal for a child. If they are somebody who has symptoms that they believe are true COVID symptoms, that's when the student is actually, they call the parent to come and pick them up and they walk them outside so that, you know, the parent doesn't even come inside the building. They are also in the isolation space, which has to be available in each school while we wait on the parents to arrive. And, and then if they believe that they're having symptoms, they do, they do go into quarantine. And the length of the quarantine again depends on how they're working with the Department of Health and with our nurses.
Okay, and then how, how do we do, I forget, I'm sure I'm not using the right term. Track and trace, and then how do we do notification?
So all the, all the tracing, the contact tracing is actually done by the Greenwich Health Department. So if there is a case that is positive, they have a legal obligation in Connecticut to report that. Even if a test is taken in another city, it goes back to where their residence is. That gets reported to the health department at that point. The health department makes contact with the family and they start the contact tracing. In Greenwich, right now, they have twenty people who are trained in contact tracing. They feel like they're very well staffed. However, at the state level, they also have contact tracers that they can mobilize should there be an outbreak in any of the communities to be able to help, which was a little bit of a challenge last year with the outbreak because it moved so quickly. But they have more people trained, they're, they're ready to go with that. And that's the Department of Health.
And how are we notifying other parents in the building?
Well, that will depend on the building, how big it is, is it a cohort, is it one classroom? Who has been in contact with a student that's positive? And just as in flu season, when there's an outbreak, they will often notify a classroom, for instance, of if there are twenty children and they all of a sudden have six flu cases in one week, they'll notify parents to watch out for those symptoms. If somebody has tested positive, that's in the class and there's been high contact, that's where the health department will help us determine if the entire class or the entire grade level or the entire school, depending on who they've been in contact with, need to actually quarantine for the full two weeks, which would mean that that classroom that has to quarantine would then go to remote learning during that quarantine time or that individual school.
So I guess I'm just curious, as a school system, it sounds like this is, we fully delegated this to the Department of Health. It's not anything we're going to be doing as a school system to notify parents. There's been an instance of COVID in a particular school, classroom or grade, right? Is that what you're saying?
We partner. Yeah. We partner together. Ultimately, it is the Department of Health who determines if that, if there is a case and what the, they talk, they work with the family. So they have information, private medical information after they're working with the family that we would not have as a school district about where the family has been, where the contact may have happened. And then they also look at, you know, it's like.
But I'm talking about private health information. What I'm talking about is, I'm just trying to understand. Hold on, hold on, Joe.
Mr. Kelly, Peter, I've got to take the point of order. Mr. Kelly, please.
Um, Mr. Chair, I feel like we're in deposition here. We're asking and re-asking a question. It seems like you're trying to force answers that, that have been answered already. You're trying to seem, you seem like you're trying to get a different answer. So I, that's just my interpretation of it. I don't know if others feel the same. But if you could have more clear conversation, it certainly helped me follow your, your intentions here.
Thank you, Ms.
So Tony, what I'm trying to understand is in schools today, we have, we notify parents if there's been, if they're in a classroom, there's been lice or there's been strap or we know, the school system notifies parents when that occurs. And I, I thought your answer would be as simple as we're going to follow the same protocol when we know someone has COVID. Were you going to go notify parents that there's an instance of it? We don't necessarily, obviously, we wouldn't tell people who it is, what they're, so on and so forth. But it sounds like you've got a different protocol for this. So that's why I'm trying to just get the clarity of what we're going to do when this occurs.
It really is the same protocol, you know, if we have, if we have a reason to notify a classroom because its other children could be at risk, then that's when the health department would actually notify the children in that classroom. And not children, the parents, but so yes, I mean, it's, it really is. The difference is.
There's, there's a big if statement in there, but I'm not going to sit here and debate it with you.
The big difference, what makes COVID difficult is when you're talking about symptoms versus actually be, having a positive case, for instance, in a, in a child's family. So those are, those are very different because a child may be going for a test and it may just be symptomatic. So, but again, health department works on that.
My question was simple. My question is simple. If a kid seems to be expressing symptoms, you have a protocol for that. My, the second question was simple, which is if it's been identified that a child has it, how do you notify other parents in the school that there is this incidence of a child who has tested positive with COVID? I didn't talk about their parents. I didn't talk about their siblings. I'm sorry. It was just a simple question and somehow it veered off. But I hear your answer. Your answer is the Department of Health is going to determine that and then will participate in helping them. I don't know what, communicate to parents based upon what they do. If I misunderstood that, please correct me.
No, that's the process we've used for, I think, decades in Greenwich. So that's no change.
That's not the process in Greenwich, but okay. Never mind, keep.
Peter, I think we ought to wrap this up. We've been at close to three hours. Here's some other agenda items. And I know some members had some other obligations this evening. So if you had anything else?
I have nothing else.
Thank you. All right. I think most of my questions have been asked and answered some multiple times. So thank you, Dr. Jones. I guess I'll just say, you know, I understand the apprehension that's still out there with parents, students and teachers. This is a process. It's never going to be done. I think people need to understand that. You know, guidance comes every day from, from the state. Sometimes it differs from the guidance they've previously given us. So, you know, I think we just move forward. You know, we, we have the choice for families that need to make it. And I'm glad to hear there's flexibility with that. I know there's been a lot of questions asked, not just tonight, but by, by parents, by community members. I dialed into all five town halls this week. I need a new hobby. They're critical questions and they're important questions. And, you know, not everybody's always going to agree on all of this stuff. All this stuff, but I, I do applaud Dr. Jones for, for doing this. I applaud the administration for their continued work and our teachers for, for thinking forward and raising questions and issues and the community as well. You know, that probably isn't going to stop. And I think that's a good thing. So, you know, continued dialogue around this will help everybody better understand as we move forward. So with that, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which I, I will tell you is our agenda plan. It's an action item. At the last meeting, we had a discussion about our agenda plan. There was some talk of possible suggested changes. I want to thank Ms. Downey for reaching out to me. I think Ms. Hersch, she reached out directly to the superintendent. Didn't really see any other changes come through and thank you to Mr. Antonaccio for, for being our scribe. So the agenda plan before you has been modified. I do want to point out, you know, again, that we probably will, will restart with live meetings, probably with just the board in attendance. We're looking at trying to do that September third meeting. The location may not be Havemeyer. We're, we're working on that right now. So that's, that's coming. You know, there are meetings on here that I'm not sure were on our original, original calendar. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda plan and then we can discuss it and decide what we want to do with it. So I move to accept the 2020, 2021 agenda plan as presented with all of the, with all the additional meetings. Is there a second for that motion? Joe, I gave you the earlier one. So I'm going to go with Ms. Hirsch on this one, if that's okay.
I'll second it.
All right. So discussion on the agenda plan. And of course, I just want to say this document basically points out the topical conversations the board plans to have throughout the coming school year. We are not wedded to this agenda plan in that there's usually a lot of movement. Items move on, items move off, we add things. We, we move things to written reports. So this is where we, we stand as of today. There's a lot of work to be done. If you look at the plan, there's some things that moved from the spring onto this, onto this year's schedule. You know, critical items, we have yet to have our discussion about, about budget goals for the coming year. I talked to the chair of the BET Budget Committee today and they're starting work on budget guidelines. So we're taking that up on September third. We want to continue with our conversations about special education. So we're going to take up the results of the devising seminars first before we move into the special education review. So, you know, there is an order to these things. Hopefully, they make some sense. Obviously, you know, at the end of every meeting, we have the ability to update our agenda and also midstream, right? Before we get to a meeting, if members want to add items, they have the ability to reach out to me, to the superintendent and we can, we can work on that. Ms. Kowalski.
Yeah, so I was trying to follow along from the, sorry, the likes of, from the August tenth version, I think we had versus the current version. Trying to understand the changes that were, were adjusted. So, and I couldn't follow it because we didn't have a red line. Is there a simpler way to explain where we've made adjustments?
So there are no major adjustments. As I said, I really didn't get that feedback from, from members on, on adding items, moving things around in a complete fashion. What we did is we took the expulsion hearings off. Those are usually scheduled on an as needed basis. So that, that may be part of the difficulty in reviewing them. We added a few items, refer back to my pad, we added accepting the COO for the Lebanon school. I think the special ed stuff, we made sure that it was October and then November. And of course, we're going to probably talk about that monthly. I think we're going to have a regular cadence on that. I don't think there's any, we talked about adding GHS entry. Right now, until the building committee gets formed, we basically will wait for them. There's two actions that we will have to take once the building committee starts working. One is to approve the architect. The second would be to approve the design. Those are both requirements in the town charter.
So, yeah, because that's one thing I noticed that it, that fell off. So that's not on the schedule at all anymore?
Yeah, not until we have the building committee formed and until we have a sense of their timing. You know, the first, the selectmen are taking, I think they've already taken applications for interested community members. They're doing interviews. What they will do is make their recommended slate. It goes to the RTM for vote in September. Once they start meeting, hopefully we'll have a better sense of their timeline and then we can add those onto our calendar. They're basically TBD at this point. But those are the, those are the two items we'll take up. Once a project goes to the building committee, the only two places where the board, well, there's, there's three places where the board gets involved. One is approving the architect, approving, second is approving the design and the third is requesting the money from the town. So depending on how fast they, they get to work, once they're, once they're appointed and approved by the, appointed by the select people and approved by the RTM, then we can have a better sense of timing on that.
And when do we have, I'm, sorry, I need to, I had it up in front of me and I lost it. The strategic planning component of, when is the first time that's meeting again? Did that get bumped up?
So that would need to, the committee has to meet to take that up and come back to us. And again, that's one of those items where I think once the committee gets going, we can, we can discuss the right cadence for the board. As of right now, what we did in the spring is we extended our, our strategic plan until the committee is ready to, to move forward with its work. So I'll leave that to the committee members to get together and decide. And if you all have a sense of when you want it on the board agenda, we'll, we'll edit it our next meeting.
And Peter, just as a reminder, we did have a strategic plan update on that October third retreat. But I don't know if we're talking just about the current status at that one or perhaps where we're going to, you know, mapping out how, where we're going to be at the end of the year.
Sorry, Mr. Versing, can I ask one more question?
No, absolutely. No, absolutely.
The other question I have is, I, I know that over the course of the last year, that we've done this, at every meeting, we adjust, we've had an opportunity to make adjustments to the schedule as seen fit. So would you view this more as a working document as opposed to a set document?
I consider it to be a living, breathing, aspirational document. So really, that flexibility is always going to be there. We, you know, we will adjust the agenda as needed. Sometimes the administration says they need more time on something. Sometimes something else takes priority. So it is something that will constantly be changed. But this basically gives the administration a sense of what they need to plan for in terms of discussions with the board. So it's, it helps with the governance. Any other questions, comments, thoughts on the agenda plan? All right, hearing none, the motion on the floor is to accept the agenda plan with the, with the dates as noted. Taking the roll call vote, Bernstein is a yes, Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher?
No.
Okay, that passes 6-2. Thank you very much. And we're going to move on to our last item of the evening. Oh, Dr. Jones, I thought there was something you wanted to mention about the, the high school, which we were going to add to the agenda plan, but I don't think we needed to anymore. Do you want to?
Yeah. We, as part of our thinking about just our diversity, equity, racism, and the work that we're doing this year, also one of the panels that I served on with the YWCA about two weeks ago, you know, we were having the conversation that we had already changed our, our house, our housemaster to house administrators. And so, you know, credit to Mr. Mayo and Dana Talata in that, you know, collaboratively, we are going to change it in the agenda this year to be a principal and vice principal. I think today I said assistant when I sent the board a note, but it's vice principal. And we feel like that's a real, a great change in the right direction just based on how housemaster or headmaster makes some people feel. And we are really doing a lot of work this year on how we can continue to improve and grow. And that's a big step, we think, for us starting the year out.
Thanks for that update. And I presume at some point, you're going to brief us on the further work on diversity, but we'll figure out where to put that on the agenda once we, once we get into our, our flow. All right, with that, Ms. Stowe, I'm going to turn it over to you on the mask policy, since it's an action item. Do you want to make a motion to put it on the table, and then we can decide what to do with it?
Yeah, is there a number? Yeah. Is there a number? I have it. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the policy as presented.
All right, and is there a second, I presume, from one of the members of PGC?
Christina has her hand up.
Christina, go ahead. Ms. Downey?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Ms. Stowe, why don't you start the discussion?
Okay, so I sent the board a note earlier today. I'm not, I think we might have to amend one or two things in this policy. And then if we're still comfortable, we can vote on it, or I imagine we'll be meeting again. And then we could always defer to a next meeting. Although I do think we should at least give the community a sense for us, at a minimum, being directionally happy with this meeting, since, again, you know, 82 and a half percent of our students and our teachers are coming back into the classroom in just a few weeks. So I think it's important that they know what we expect of them in terms of this mask policy. So a few things of note. Let me see, and I'm just pulling it up. So there was a new executive order. Can you all hear me, Chriswell? Okay, okay, thank you. There was a new executive order 7NNN this week that requires medical documentation in order for an individual to claim an exemption from a requirement to wear a mask. Frankly, I felt like we actually did a pretty good job of covering that in the policy originally. I don't, I actually don't think the executive order says anything more than we had already covered in the policy. Having said that, if we want to make it a little bit more robust, we might want to just put in that section, you know, per executive order 7NNN, since it really meets those guidelines. That was my first thing. I also received a question this week about respirator masks and N95s. And I think that N95 masks are acceptable, respirators are not. But I'm happy to sort of just continue that conversation if there's any confusion. And last but not least, from the last board meeting, Peter, Mr. Cher, Peter Cher, however we're referring to one another this evening, suggested a sunset date for the policy. And you will notice in the document that we posted in the, that we showed the change to make it just for this academic school year. It's in the last paragraph. So those are the three things of note. Christina, Karen, would you like to add there before we discuss?
No, I think you covered everything.
I think the only thing I'd say is Peter Scher had raised the point about feeling that this was a little bit more like a regulation due to the level of detail, which while I totally agree with, we don't want to necessarily get overly detailed in a lot of our policies, the, the problem is, we want to make it very clear to the community, the parents, the staff, the students, about what is and isn't expected. And we felt that keeping this level of detail in the policy provided that information to the community in a meaningful way that it, people aren't then on the hunt to try to find a regulation about what is and is not permitted in the interest of clarity, because of so much uncertainty, as we've been talking about. This gives some certainty about what is and isn't expected. So the level of detail, we decided, really was appropriate to this particular policy.
Ms. Olson?
Thank you, and thank you to the committee. And I have, I just have a couple of questions, and I know it's, I know that a lot of work has gone into this. I agree, I do think that we need a clear, I think it needs to be detailed, and I, I appreciate that it's detailed like this, because I think people need to be given direction in what is and is not, is expected and what is not expected. First, I, respirator masks, they're N95, there is a brand called respirators. They're interchangeable, the name respirator and N95, not the masks with breathing. But if you, I have a pack in my kitchen, I could go grab one. They're just the plain mask, but they're called respirators. That's, it's like Kleenex and tissue. So I think we need to be careful saying not respirators, because I'm not talking about the things that look like, I don't know, look like, exactly, thank you. I was going to say we landed on Mars, but we, the standards we sort of have. So I, I just want to be clear about that, because we have respirator masks, and they're just the regular ones that go on that. So I want to make sure, because there is, there is a brand that, that says that. That I, Toni brought up the, I think she brought up the executive order 7, 7, whatever it was, the medical documentation. I think Toni, you had said, and I'll pull you into this too, I think, because you had said at the town hall that we're really encouraging, I don't know if we can require or encourage people that have medical documentation to opt for the Remote Learning Academy when possible. Is that something that we can, is that language we can use? Because, because if we have, I brought this up before. My concern is if you have a lot of medically documented unmasked students in one classroom, whether it be anxiety or asthma, or for a variety of reasons, if they have a doctor's note, then those unmasked students that, as we know, are sitting three, three, sometimes three feet, a mere three feet apart, three to six feet, but that puts all those other students and staff at risk. So that's the concern, and that ratio of how many unmasked students can be in a class? And can we put in there somehow that we need to be able to, that we are strongly encouraging people that can't wear a mask? I'm not talking about, talking about, I don't know, Toni, you can take it from there if you want, whatever you had said at town hall.
Well, so the Connecticut Department of Health really has, came out strongly over the last few weeks. Now, I'm not sure if it shows up in their document or if it was on, where they advise us. And basically, what they were saying is that if a student cannot wear a mask for a health or a medical reason, they already have a medical condition of some sort, that not wearing a mask does put them at risk, not only other children. And that really, those families should be keeping their children home and opt for remote to keep that child safe. Now, we also know we're going to have some children who have special needs, and they're going to struggle to, to wear a mask. And we're going to do everything we can, try different face shields and, you know, a baseball hat with a shield on it, whatever we can do to try to help that child find a comfort level. And we'll have to just work case by case on those, for those unique learners that, you know, need us to work with the families. But if it is a health or medical reason, they are advising that you don't send your child to school.
And I'm not talking about the particular population to whom you were referring.
Right, yeah. Yeah, they're advising that you don't send your child to school if it's a health or medical reason, just because they're already compromised in some sort. And then to, to come to school and not wear a mask, you know, is, is, it's putting that child at risk from the Connecticut Department of Health.
So I don't know if that's language that we can put in, that we recommend, or state is, I mean, put it not unnecessarily, the state is urging, urging people to stay home if they're not able to wear a mask. I don't know if that's something we can put in there, but something to think about. Or the, the ratio, because I am so concerned for the teacher who might have five, and then other students who might have five, 10, certain number of unmasked students in the class. It's still a concern to me. I'm all for a mask policy. I, I love all the work that you've put into it. I'm not trying to downplay that at all. These are just concerns that keep coming to me. If we were to vote on this right now, I'd probably have to abstain only because I still feel like there needs to be a little more in there, those, those points.
Well, I guess the question is, Megan, is, like, those kinds of things you're talking about, and this is what I just said about not getting into the regulations. Maybe that's stuff that should be the regulations, the notion of more than a certain percentage of kids in the class, because then that's an administrative issue, right, as opposed to a policy issue? Or encouraging, you know, they'll encourage people who want a medical exemption to go to a remote school. Maybe, I don't know, that might be a balance of that that's a regulation as opposed to a policy per se. I don't know how people think about it, but that's just kind of my off-the-cuff reaction to what. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just thinking about how crafting the policy.
Yeah, and I don't have an answer either. So I, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer either. I just, I just want to make sure that this information, because it's so important, and it is the number one thing that's protecting one another. And, you know, I wear a mask, I protect you, you wear a mask, you protect me. I think it's, we know that, and it's, we hear it over and over again. So I think, I think the more we can put out there, the better at this point. I don't know.
No, I, 100%, we, we had this conversation every time we meet. So we, we all feel the same way. You know, so I, I think it's, I don't know if we can put in the policy, but I think we all feel the same way. So I think Gordon Weinstein said it right in the last meeting. I think the principal sort of said, right? If, if you need a note, we'd, we'd prefer you choose remote, right?
And I was going to say, you know, I, I think we would need to sort of check with, with legal and then, Gabe, as to what we can and cannot put into a policy like that, you know, when it comes to, you know, percentages and so forth. And have discussed it. I'm just saying, I, I don't know, you know, what we can do in that regards.
No, you can't just pull numbers out of your hat necessarily. I just, it's still just, it's always been a concern of mine. It's still a concern, it hasn't got away. So I just feel like I had to bring it up again, because it's still a concern near and dear to my heart. So I just, I don't, I don't have a solution, so I apologize, but I still have a concern. It's a theme tonight for me, but.
Yeah, all right, we're here to ask those hard questions.
Absolutely.
Ms. Kowalski?
So I have, so this is clear to me. This policy is requiring a face covering, which is defined as the traditional masks that we've all been wearing. And then it goes on to define face shield. There's no objection if a family decides that sending their child, children to school, that they want them to wear both a mask and a face shield during the day, all day. And that's how they're making the decision that if their child is going to school, you're going to wear both. That's not a problem when they go to the classroom.
I don't think, yeah, there's no pro, it's basically, we're setting the minimum, not the maximum. Like, the minimum is they have to have the mask if they want to have a shield on as well. We have not prohibited it at all. We're just defining it as, I think it was partially in the medical, yeah, you're right.
No, I, I under, yeah, I, I get it completely. And obviously, it, it's clearly defined what the face covering mask is, and then it obviously defines what a face shield. I just want to make sure that it's clear for parents that, you know, the, the option to wear both, if that's part of what you're requiring, and as you can see, I'm probably leaning towards sending my kids in hazmat suits, but that they're allowed to wear both, and that's not prohibited when they're in class and they're talking that they got the, they got a shield on.
I don't think so, Toni, right? That's fine, right? Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, and we may have some teachers that choose to teach like that.
Yeah, and my understanding, standing from Mary and talking to her, is that, in fact, some of the, the special ed teachers were preferring to engage in that kind of PPE when, when approaching a child and working with them, particularly on speech therapy, when they need to, to move their mouth in such a way and stuff to, to provide extra protection.
Ms. Hirsch?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have, need to have my hand raised.
That's all right. All right, so given where we are, Ms. Stowe, I guess I'll, I'll take the pulse. I think you were talking about possibly amending, just to add reference to the, to the state executive order with that.
I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. I was going to say, if you want, I could just tell you where I'm going to add it, just so everyone knows. It's in the exemption language, the first paragraph, it says, the note should state the medical reason for the requested exemption, and you can say then per executive order, you know, something along those lines.
Do you want to go ahead and make that motion, so we have it on the floor in front of us?
Yeah, I mean, should I get a sense, though? Does everyone want to? I guess it's already on the floor for voting. I didn't know if people wanted to.
Is there, is there any objection to taking it up tonight? Let's, let's try it that way. And as all-
Well, I think, is, are, Megan, I mean, like, I think people want to be comfortable. Or do you feel comfortable without kind of those clarifying points that you were just asking about?
I, I might be, I might be the only one. Like I said, I still feel like I need to abstain, just because I, I feel like not everything is in there yet. But I, if I'm the only one, I don't know, take a pulse of others perhaps, too.
Yeah, I'd be glad to hear from everyone else.
Yeah, I'd rather everyone be on board with this policy, obviously. And then, you know, it's important that we're all comfortable, because this is very important.
Just so you all have a sense of time, we, our next meeting is September 3. Teachers will be back by then, so I really think it's important to get this policy in place. We can amend it as we go, which we, we should keep an eye on this policy as we move more. And if there's different equipment, or people come up with something equivalent to a gator, or, look, I, I love-
Gators are no.
I know gators are no, and I know bandanas are no. And so now, now I've had to go get more masks. So, but I, I do think we need to, we need to start giving this guidance sooner than later. So if I had my druthers, I think we, we would amend it to add the reference to the state, and then we can come back and revisit as needed.
Okay. I'd like to hear, do we want to hear, Joe? Because we haven't heard from you on this.
I'm good, I've got no problems.
And other, other Peter, or P, Peter S?
He's muted at the moment.
All right, well, all right, let's, let's give it a go.
When do you make the motion to amend?
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to amend to, and Christina, you're taking notes, to add language at the end of the, in the exemption paragraph. The note should state the medical reason for the requested exemption per executive order 7NNN.
All right, and is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, so the motion on the table is to amend, any discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing no hands, all those in favor, Bernstein is a yes, Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Sorry, this is a motion to add. Sorry, this is the motion to add.
This is the motion to add the language, yes.
Add some language, yes.
Okay, and Cher?
I'm sorry, tell me again which language we're adding.
The motion is to add language referencing the state's executive order on masks.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you. So that, that passes eight zero. So now we're back to the motion as amended. So I'm going to take a roll call vote on that. Bernstein is a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
I'm staying.
And Cher?
Yes.
All right, so that passes seven zero one. Thank you.
Can I ask one question though?
Yeah.
Megan, did you want to share why you didn't feel comfortable voting for that? You don't have to if you don't want to. I was just curious.
Well, I think I did. I, I mean, I, I, maybe it came out a little jumbled, but I, I, there was, I'm all in favor of the mask policy. But I, there was a couple of things that I still had.
Reservations about?
Reservations about, exactly.
Fair enough. Thank you.
We need a mask policy. I'm all for it. I just, I had reservation about some of the things. That's it.
Thanks.
All right, thank you guys for getting this done tonight. I appreciate it.
And Tony, I'm sure you noted, uh, Megan's concerns because some of them, I think, would be more in communication from the district and more on the operational procedures side. All right, with that, I want to thank everybody who stuck with us. At our high, we had 325 members of the public join. It's great to have you here at the end of August. Our next meeting will be September 3rd. Uh, watch out for details on that as to time, place, and how. And with that, Mr. Kelly, if you'd like to make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm going to second that motion. Um, so Bernstein's a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
I'm sorry, yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher?
Yes.
Nobody ever abstains on a motion to adjourn. Thank you everybody and have a good.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.